Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 12:00 PM Department Head Budget Presentation Meeting of May 20, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. In keeping with the council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. So I'll call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time. So please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a speaker card and place it on the tray in the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. So please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain the order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received two public speaker cards for items not listed on today's agenda. The first public speaker is Linda Mull, followed by Wendell Wesley Jr.
Ms. Mull. Just come right here to the missle and lower the mic, please. Do you need any assistance?
I'm fine. Thank you, Ms. Mull.
Welcome. Would you lower the mic a little, please? Thank you. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
My name is Linda Mull, and I'm here to talk about the injustice of eviction for seniors. I was evicted from my apartment because I live on a fixed income, and I was recently involved in a motor vehicle accident in October of last year, which totally destroyed my vehicle. And as a result of that accident, I received a complicated tear to my pancreas. I was a nurse for 35 years, and my gastroenterologist is Dr. Neil Bogle, and I have been going to him religiously, and he said that he had never seen a person with a complicated tear to their pancreas. I have had to pay as much as $45 one way to go to the emergency room, the ER, and wherever to seek treatment for this. As a result of that, I have been unable to pay my rent, and I was evicted from the Clemmer &amp; Clemmer apartment at 4820 Columbus Street, Apartment J. I was not told when I rented this apartment that it was not on the bus line. They failed to tell me that it was not on, and I did not have a car at my disposal because of the accident. I just wanted to be able to say that. Something should be...
Ms. Mull, I'm so sorry about your accident. And Mr. Clegg, is it okay if I just ask Anthony to take some contact information? Let's try to get you connected with some services. Mr. Valdez, can you just help Ms. Mull, and we'll just try to take some information so we can get her services? And I'm so sorry to hear about your accident.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Council, City Management. My name is Wendell Wesley Jr. And these type of things are happening far too often, and a lot of times when they do find some temporary housing, it's shared. I've recently learned that some of these temporary housings that they have to pay for are their social security. A lot of these temporary housing do not have a nutritional meal on their menu, and this is what we're giving our seniors. We're having them paid upwards of almost $900 to share a room, sometimes with more than one person, with not even a nutritional meal. And if they try to go to one of the other places that has maybe a more quality meal for their diabetes, or wherever else medically they're going through, they have no way of getting there. This is not how we should be treating our seniors. We can do better. We need to do better. You know, housing is not affordable. It's pushing more and more people out into the street. So I know that our city is working hard to put together some things by Community Land Trust, but I want to say that we really need to sit together at the table because what is being called low income right now really isn't low income enough. If you're on Section 8, you're going to be fine, but if you're not on Section 8, it's too high. And even with rent control, when it passes, if it's 10% or 3%, you're only going to be one to two, or maybe three, rent increases from being pushed out onto the street. So we need to make sure this is part of a nonprofit so that they can keep it truly low affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Madam Clerk, any other speakers on non-agenda items?
Mayor Go, we've received no other speaker cards on non-agenda items. We've received two speaker cards on agenda items.
I only have one. Do you have another? And go ahead and call.
Wendell Wesley Jr., followed by Sandra Placencia.
Okay. Thank you. Again, the eviction prevention program is very vital to our community and any community for that matters. There are landlords that are not being honorable, and that's a shame, but that's the world we live in. So we need accountability. We need to make sure that that is heavily regulated so that landlords are not wrongfully pushing people out into the streets. So we came to the City Council a little over a year ago. You guys did agree. You granted us $350,000. Thank you for that. However, these people are going to need an attorney. That's going to cost a minimum of $2 million. Okay? So we're here again asking for the $2 million and to also implement this program because, you know, every moment we wait to implement this program and get the funding we need to protect people, more and more people are getting out of the street, which is equally more and more crime, which is equally more and more mental illness. And we don't even have enough mental illness facilities. And from what I've seen, a lot of these shelters out there, some of them will create some mental illness because these people that are in the shelter, some of them need to be in a mental health facilities, and people are being assaulted. Seniors are being assaulted in these shelters, and it's really not safe for them. It's not even safe for a young person. So we need to define, you know, who is going to be in a shelter, who is going to be in a mental health facility, and we need to make sure that we get all that right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. And Ms. Placencia, do you prefer to speak now or after staff's presentation on the budget item? Any speak? You're welcome to. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you. My name is Sandra Placencia, and I'm a current policy advocate with Leadership Council. Leadership Council and our partner organizations and community members stand before you to ask that the city allocate $2 million from Measure N for the eviction prevention pilot program. We urge the city to fund a comprehensive program that will provide effective community outreach and education on tenant rights, provide legal guidance to prevent landlord and tenant issues from reaching the eviction process, and attorney representation in court. As the city determines funding sources and amounts for every department today, we ask the City Council to amend recommendations to be reflective and inclusive of funding the eviction prevention program. The city has the responsibility to ensure that any funds from PSVS are spent advancing the 13 priorities approved by taxpayers in November of 2018. The EPP is ineligible use of funds under Measure N, as it will advance four of the main priorities and support council goals to reduce homelessness. We reiterate that multiple cities throughout the U.S. have implemented various versions of their own eviction prevention program. Stout, a consultant agency, has done numerous amounts of research and cost-benefit analysis on right-to-council eviction programs. Their cost-benefit analysis cover a wide range of jurisdictions, including urban and rural jurisdictions within the country, and based on their data, the return on investment on a right-to-council program ranges from $3 to $12. None of their cost-benefit analysis have led to a loss of funds. Therefore, we can confidently state that every dollar the city invests into the EPP will have a positive impact on the city's physical stability and in turn help proactively curb homelessness. We uplift Councilwoman Carr's statement from the last City Council meeting that while it's incredibly important to invest in affordable housing, we also need immediate solutions to the housing crisis. Since funding was originally allocated for this program, over 2,500 families have had evictions filed against the main court. This does not represent folks that were asked to leave units or self-evicted without going through the process. In fact, according to the Bakersfield Californian's research on unlawful detainees, only 1.6% of defendants had an attorney in comparison to 72% of plaintiffs who had an attorney. In every single case, the landlord has won their case. It is incredibly vital for the city to proactively combat the homelessness crisis. You have the money...
Ms. Placencia, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Yes. So just wanted to say that the city has the money. You have the community support. But we're asking you to bring this home and implement the program as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other speakers regarding the agenda item?
Mayor Go, we have not received any additional speaker cards.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports Item 3A, Fiscal Year 2024-25 Department Budget Presentations, Budget Workshop Number One.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. A few comments before I jump into the first presentation. For the benefit of the viewing public, these workshops are being streamed online on our Agenda Management System, as well as on YouTube, as well as on KGO for that matter. It's being broadcast. And then these workshops will be available to the community and to council members through those same resources, our Agenda Management webpage, as well as our YouTube page, so that folks can catch up on these workshops as their time permits. Also, we have created a little bit of a different streamlined approach to making these presentations this year. We hope that it helps present the information in a way that highlights the most important points for council. We recognize that there's lots of really good work that's happening in the city, but we're going to try and report out on all of those accomplishments in our work sessions around the City Council goals. And while we tie our budget, of course, to the City Council goals, this workshop is really going to be focused on the budget itself, more so than accomplishments, although we'll have a few highlights throughout. We're going to run through the departments each one at a time. If there are questions after each department, we would welcome council questions, comments at that time. But there will be some summary slides at the very end that put things into more of a holistic context, because again, this is just each department as they come. And so know that we'll try and, we have some slides with the intent at the end to summarize the key information for council. This is not a voting action item. This is just our workshops to get the information in front of council. We'll be bringing forward the first reading of the budget at our first meeting in June with final adoption, our second meeting in June. And I would also note that the information related to Public Safety Vital Services tax went to the Oversight Committee for that tax, and council did receive in memo format that same information that was presented to the PSVS Oversight Committee. And there've been some high-level revenue projections shared with council, but this is the first time that council's getting this level of detail at the department level. So we'll run through each department, and again, as noted, we tried to streamline, and so some of these will move fairly quickly. Again, just trying to highlight the key items. So this is City Manager's Office budget. This is just the City Manager's Office, you know, staff and budget. This is not the citywide numbers. You'll note some fairly large variances on both sides of this budget, and that's because we had moved staff out of Economic and Community Development into the City Manager's Office around homelessness to really provide a high level of prioritization. We created a Community Vitality Group during that same timeframe, and as we continue to evaluate the work of Economic and Community Development, what they do around housing and affordable housing and homelessness, we're moving the three individuals who are part of the contract management function around homelessness back into Economic and Community Development. Community Vitality will stay in the City Manager's Office. We'll focus on the impacts of homelessness, as well as homeless strategy. But the three staff that are serving our contract management functions around homelessness are going back into Economic and Community Development, as well as the dollars that are related to the contract management for Brundage Lane Navigation Center. Those will be housed in Economic and Community Development. You see a slight uptick in some of our capital dollars. That's just with some of our CalVIP staff and Community Vitality staff. There's a large percent increase, but fairly small dollars because of small budget to just make some office spaces available for those staff. Quite advancing, Julie, if you could help me there. Thank you. I already noted the probably most significant change budget-wise is that first piece there and the move of Economic and Community Development staff back into their department, but also doing a slight restructuring where I'm taking two assistant, well, one assistant to the City Manager and one high-level analyst position in the City Manager's Office, and transitioning those into a third Assistant City Manager. No overall increase in FTE, or full-time employee count or budget, but it's just an organizational restructuring that's happening there that's revenue and position neutral. The reasoning for this is that as we've been able to stand up new programs, thankfully, around things like our grants and our performance audits and our legislative advocacy, as well as Community Vitality and CalVIP, wanting to create capacity for that span of control at the executive level. And so really, it's a trade of two positions for the one new Assistant City Manager. At the same time, we're taking a manager position that existed prior in Community, excuse me, in Visit Bakersfield, and we're creating what I'm calling an Enterprise Project Manager. The responsibility of that position is going to be to track high-level priority projects, as well as train and increase the project management skills across the organization. We have good folks doing good work, but I've noted that we can get tighter in our overall project management and creating this high-level manager to work with departments and making sure we're driving the work of the city effectively and good project management skills and practices is going to be one of those roles. And then I'll note a little bit more on the next slide, one other change in personnel. Several departments will probably make note of this, but this is our first year that we are in our new ERP with these budget numbers, and so it's a big deal that we've kicked off our ERP and we're working in that system and that the general ledger and all the budget information is found there. And again, this last year, probably most notably specific to the City Manager's Office have created that Community Vitality Operations Center where we're taking requests for service related to homeless encampments and coordinating that response across all city units. If you could, thanks, Julie. The, a couple other items beyond those that I mentioned earlier. We have created what we're calling a Community Relations Team. This was our PIO, and we had one communications coordinator. We had two positions last year that were moved out of Technology Services into the City Manager's Office, and we've created a manager over Community Relations, and our Visit Bakersfield and Help teams and other communication staff are now part of that unit. And then also, as we're moving forward with ERP, we're noting that there are needs to support the ERP system beyond just our initial goal I over the next couple of years as we continue to implement and potentially beyond. And so these are resources that are coming from the ERP project. This is not a new general fund position, but instead this is coming from ERP project dollars to help us continue to implement the ERP modules and make those final adjustments and configurations that are needed over the next few years. And I already noted the other two comments about the more executive restructuring in the City Manager's Office. Next slide, please. Thank you. City Clerk's Office and RISC are part of City Manager's Office, so I'll go over those fairly quickly. You'll note here some slight reduction in operations and capital outlay that's related largely to software implementation and software subscriptions. We also had a slight decrease in some tuition reimbursement costs on the operations side. We also had a slight decrease in some tuition reimbursement costs on the operations side. On the Personnel Services side, you'll see most departments, because of our continued commitment to class and comp, you're probably going to see around a 10% plus or minus increase in personnel costs between CalPERS and benefits and COLAs. Smaller department here, and so slightly higher percentage increase in personnel services. That's just because there's a number of younger staff that are seeing step increases, and we have one position overfill. But you'll see on the next slide that there are no substantive personnel changes to the Clerk's Office. In fact, if we go to the next slide. So there are seven staff in the Clerk's Office. That's been constant for a number of years. Again, we had that slight reduction in those operational costs, and we have one position that's also underfilled at this time that we're holding there for succession planning opportunities in the Clerk's Office. Notable things from this last year, we did launch our new agenda management software. That was a big accomplishment, and we're in fairly smooth sailing there. And so that's a sign that our ERP will get to the same place, just like we did with our Escribe. Upcoming, we are doing our every other year update to our conflict of interest code. That will be a notable lift. And then, of course, the municipal elections. We did the primary this year, and we'll have a fairly big lift this fall coming up as well. For risk management, you'll note that there are some operational increases there. I'll show you a slide in just a moment that I think paints the picture a little bit better. But we continue to see challenges to our liability and risk environment. If you go to the next slide. Of course, as we continue to add more staff, as we add more assets, properties, and more programs, that also means there is an increase in workers' compensation, other liability costs. At the same time, just overall premiums are increasing significantly throughout the market. This is true in private markets as well as public sector markets. And the fairly litigious environment in California just continues to drive these costs up significantly. We're doing everything that we can to be creative and thoughtful in this process. We're looking at some alternative equipment and as well as sort of wearable technologies to reduce our workers' comp claims. We take a hard look at where we get most of our claims, and we think about other ways to prevent and offset. We're also working, RISC has been assigned along with Technology Services to implement an emergency mass notification system. That's the buttons that haven't been working, that council's aware of, that we're trying to fix those buttons throughout the city, as well as have the ability to communicate quickly to all of our staff. And again, we're continuing to look at all of our safety programs to find ways to just get better and reduce the amount of claims and just create a safe culture here at the city. This is the slide that I was mentioning earlier. You'll note the yellow are our actuals, and then we have our budgeted rates and the departmental rates. You'll see that trend line continues to go up. There's some, a little bit of good news in our actuals for 2023, but we saw a little bit of a downtick there in 2022. We're trying again to manage, but if you'll note, obviously, we had very high actuals in prior years, and we do have to make those up over time just through our rates. And we do anticipate, again, with just so many challenges out there, that we're not going to continue to see our actuals reduce. And so we're needing to budget more and more towards risk and liability. Those are some of our biggest cost drivers actually throughout the city are our risk and liability rates. With that, I'm going to pause and see if there are any questions, again, specific just to the City Manager's Office, RISC and Clerk's Office. If not, we can move into some of our other internal service departments.
Colleagues, are there any questions? I don't see any at this point, any requests to speak. I don't see any, so let's move on to...
We're going to move right into Technology Services. And we'll have to help advance your slides for a few minutes, too, Greg.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Congresswoman, Director, I present the proposed fiscal 2025 budget for the Technology Services Department. Our proposed budget is slightly over $20 million, which indicates a $2.2 million increase over the previous year. 1.8 million of that increase is within the Equipment Fund's operational accounts. Thank you, Adam. The remaining is spread between General Service, General Fund and PSVS Funds, mostly around personnel and insurance and liability cost increases. Regarding capital outlay, we have deferred any new capital improvement projects until mid-year, where we will reassess for capacity. However, we do have one project tentatively scheduled to replace cameras at the Amtrak station. That is pending KernCOG TDA funding.
Advance the slide, please, Julie. Returning to operational costs, one contributing factor to the increase in that cost area is that more and more of our applications are transitioning to cloud-based services. With that, there are a number of benefits with that model, such as increased resiliency and less hardware dependence. It does impact our operational costs, though. Additionally, the amount of tech we use throughout the city expands yearly, making it difficult to keep pace. As such, we continue to review our processes to ensure that they are as efficient as possible. We also continue to partner with external resources, thank you, Adam, such as Moss Adams and Infotech Research Group. In sharing in our successes, in addition to the highlights before you, we have completed 23 projects this far, this year to date. That is a 53% increase in closure rates over last year. Also, we are on track to provide over 20,000 hours of help desk or service desk request calls this year. In reviewing staffing, a few years ago, we implemented our field assigned staff program where a TS staff member is assigned to and stationed within a department, focusing on specific technical needs. Due to the success of having a TS analyst within Fleet Services, the Public Works Department transferred a vacant position to Technology Services to be reclassified to assist them with increased GIS needs. And finally, two additional reclassifications are proposed for fiscal year 2025. The first is the reclassification of an analyst within our GIS team to an engineer to provide a higher level of technical oversight to that team. The second is a reclass to an administrative analyst within our business unit to focus on and developing and processing the many agreements that flow through TS each year. Please note that some of these items may not be in the budget totals reflected on the first slide. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pernovos. Mr. Pernovos, Moss Adams had highlighted technology as being an area of high risk when they did their survey. What areas have you addressed to take care of their highest concerns?
Excellent question. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, first and foremost, we actually created a security team that focuses on cybersecurity, whereas before that was more ad hoc, shared amongst TS staff. So we have a security manager that has a team of four that just focus on security. Also, over the years, we've added additional security features to our network and our services. Just last year, we added an AI functionality to our network system. So now that, in addition to when staff is here, monitoring the network, so forth, after hours, we're alerted to any sort of abnormalities, and the system itself addresses those and shuts down any bad actors that may be entering our network. In addition to that, we've also addressed a number of other concerns that they brought out from their audit. We have put some procedures in place where we're more timely in replacing outdated equipment throughout the organization, as well as putting proper procedures and personnel in places that are needed.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation. Couple of questions for you. Number one, you mentioned as one of the department highlights in the presentation, the regional radio system that has been brought to the implementation phase. Can you describe for the council where we are in that implementation phase?
Of course, Vice Mayor. Where we are, we're working, we're working again closely with the county and Motorola on the detailed design of the overall system. Once that is finalized, then we will start ordering equipment for the larger, the system as a whole that will go through testing and then start installing. We are also in the process of doing a site assessment for each of the sites, looking at what remediations may need to take effect. Of course, our sites are 20 to 30 years old. Standards have changed in that time, so we're assessing those costs right now. In the meantime, while this work is being developed, we know we have some critical needs in our public safety departments, so we have front loaded and ordered subscriber units for fire and PD early on. We've received some of those units already, and we're working on a larger order to be shipped out later this year.
And timeline for full implementation?
Full implementation, we are shooting within the next three, maybe four years.
Three or four years?
Correct. Initially, we had hoped that it would be two to three years, given that there was some delays in equipment being ordered, and we're expecting some delays in shelters that are needed. That timeline may be increased. That's why I present that timeline currently as possibly three, but no more than four years. Anticipated, though, we're hoping it'll be shorter.
Vice Mayor, if I could also jump in, and I think Greg's being diplomatic, not trying to get ahead of me, but I've shared with a couple of you as we've checked in and very willing to share openly with you that we're concerned about the timeline, that we have noted in our partnership with our third party vendor or technical expert who's still on this project with us, who helped us through the whole request for qualifications, request for proposals process. The city and the county and our third party technical advisor, we're pushing on Motorola because we've started to see some of these delays. We've started to see some of these slips, and this is a heads up to the council that this is high on my radar as a potential challenge and issue. And again, we feel like the value of doing a regional project continues to outweigh some of the complications of dealing on a much bigger project, meaning, you know, working jointly with the county does have its complications because we're somewhat reliant on their timeline to build some of the regional infrastructure. But we do think that, of course, the benefits outweigh, you know, some of those challenges. But also, we've seen some delays on the vendor side, so we're pushing hard on the vendor. We're watching and working closely with the county as well, but this is, I would say, implementation has gone from green to yellow, and we're doing everything we can to make sure it doesn't go from yellow to red, if that sort of metaphor makes sense.
Really appreciate that and appreciate the work to prioritize this issue. It's a bit ironic to me that, you know, key infrastructure to support emergency services is being delayed. And so it seems like this ought to remain a priority of the council and, of course, the city management and staff, so I appreciate that. Please do come back with regular updates for the council so that we can stay on top of this.
Of course.
Thank you. One other question. You mentioned your technical support, which is fantastic. What was it, 20,000?
20,000.
20,000 hours. So that comment actually provoked a question in my mind. How do you measure success? Is it, you know, additional hours provided or fewer hours provided in the future?
That is a good question and one that's kind of difficult to answer. I would say success is if, depending on the request type, if it's a trouble ticket, of course, the less is a better option. That means that our equipment's lasting longer and that we're addressing needs quicker. A lot of our requests are also for additional equipment, additional software, things of that nature, that aren't always large enough to qualify as a project. So that's a good portion of our requests, too. In that regard, that shows the health of the city and its advancement in the using technology on a greater scale. So again, it's a little bit difficult question to answer. I presented that 20,000 hours just as a generic metric, but I can tell you to kind of put some quality to that, that for each type of ticket that we address, whether it's for additional services or trouble, we have SLAs associated with it. Our goal is to meet 75% of those SLAs. We are currently trending at about 80%. So we're doing well in that regard. So we're meeting the city's needs and addressing these concerns and so forth. So I think that's a positive factor in that regard. But quite frankly, you know, technology is on the rise. All departments are now really starting to get into it. I think we're just now seeing the initial advancement of technology use throughout the city, which excites me, but also, at the same time, I think about, wow, how am I going to manage all that? So we're working great with the departments. They're being very inclusive. We're, as I mentioned before, a couple of years ago, I noticed that some departments needed greater level of support. So I've worked with those departments, and either through funding or transfers of vacant positions, we've hired technical staff that report to Technology Services, receive our training, receive our education, have access to our resources, and they're stationed within the department to address their needs.
Okay, thank you. I'll close with this. You know, one of our council goals is to be efficient and innovative as a government, and I really believe that that is more critical now than ever before. And, you know, it's very clear the world is changing around us, and it's changing exponentially. And government ought to adapt at that same rate as much as we can. And so that requires us to be very innovative and try new things and take risks at times and also implement new technology, even when it's scary and even when sometimes it may feel a little uncomfortable. And so I want to thank you for all the work that you and your department is doing, first and foremost. And then, second, I have a request, and that is to help us at the DIES think through what are those appropriate measurements that we can utilize to really benchmark our progress to becoming more innovative and effective over time. You know, how should we be thinking about our innovation and our effectiveness in City Hall and how well we're doing and where we need to be strategic about employing new dollars or resources or attention so that we can continue to make advances? So I'd ask that for you to help us out and to think through that, and perhaps in the future, we can dedicate some more time in a workshop toward that end.
Councilmember Freeman.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I wondered if you can provide a little more clarity in the breakdown of the large increase in cost in operations, which in your discussion, it didn't sound like we added, I couldn't tell if we added anybody from your discussion. We didn't see a new work chart, so obviously, there's some other things in there. And the previous year, we went up by about a million and a half, and now we're going up by about a million eight. So this department, and I noticed there's a few others like this that have these very large increases every year, and others just hardly do. So can you tell us, and maybe as other presenters come up, where they have very large increases last year, this year, it seems like we don't want to see another 2 million next year? Kind of what's, what's driving these big increases? Is it people? Is it class and comp? Is it the, you know, we know everybody got about a 5% raise, but that doesn't explain 25% increase. Operations is kind of a general term. Can you explain that a little more?
Well, specifically in this regard, that 1.8 million is within our equipment...
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, that 1.8 million is within our equipment fund. Essentially, we charge departments for our services that funds the equipment fund for replacement of equipment, ongoing software maintenance and things of that nature. So what you're seeing is almost twofold. One, there is an increase in cost for software. Software cost is becoming more expensive. We have this trend now where, before you would go out and buy a piece of software, you'd buy your Microsoft operating system, costs $100, you install it, you run it for five years, then you want to buy the new one. You go out to your local store, you buy $120 copy.
So these things are, you know, a lot of times, we would have been used to those being classified as capital expenses if we're purchasing these. So are we, are these, I mean, the purchases, I think, they're not, they're not people costs. They're actually, you're having to buy software, and why don't we put that in capital outlines?
Yeah, if I could take that one, Greg. You know, the nature of how software companies are working and moving now is that you rarely buy a piece of software, and then you just sort of own that license now for, say, three or five years, and you can decapitalize that over time. The industry has moved now to subscription services, so largely, we have to just pay an annual cost for that type of service. There's a few exceptions out there, but typically, as we do our cost-benefit analysis, to buy a software for, let's say, three to five years as a singular capital project, we don't get the same level of maintenance as we do on the subscription services, and so we end up paying more as we go in and ask them to do updates and increases. And so these are becoming more operating costs because it's an annual subscription to that software.
Yeah, okay. But should we expect this to keep going up at a couple of million a year? I mean, is it getting worse and worse? You know?
No, it's a great question.
Andre's comment about efficiency seems like we have brilliant new systems, and every time we have a new brilliant software or AI, everything costs more. It never gets more efficient. It gets less efficient from a dollar standpoint. So I just wonder, is this something we will continue to see the growth of this?
Yeah.
The capital should go down, but capital goes up, and everything keeps going up.
Yeah, great question, Councilmember Freeman. I think in some ways, you know, the capital keeps going up just because of the cost of, you know, construction doing business. But to your question about will this number continue to go up, I would say yes, but not quite as much as it has been. There's a couple of reasons for that. One, we've added quite a few staff over the last four budget cycles. You'll see through the rest of the presentations today, we're adding very few staff this year. I don't expect to add many more staff in future years because we're kind of at our cap and, you know, where we could grow the organization through the PSVS monies. Some of these equipment increases are because we've still been getting all of the equipment for these newer teams, and so I see a ramping down of new equipment. At the same time, on the software side, we've seen a lot of new software costs because we've been more than a decade behind, frankly, in our business solutions that are, these are software products. And so we've been catching up. We've been spending a lot more and seeing big increases in those software costs. We still have a few fairly big projects after ERP, but none that big, and we'll, again, we'll start to see a ramping down of how many big new projects we take on, but I expect that we'll continue to grow because, again, technology and software is a big area where we're going to see growth. But I think that we'll see a slowdown in how much that growth is. One last thought is, one of the offsets for, you know, this new software, we're paying more for the software, and yet, you know, we're not necessarily reducing, let's say, staff because we're able to automate things. But what is happening is we're not needing additional staff for sure, and we actually have been, in some instances, been able to say, hey, you know, we could probably do the same level of work. And so we don't need to see those increases in staff, or we can reallocate staff to other assignments and other projects. It's unlikely that I'll come back and say we're recommending, you know, major reductions in staff, but because we have these smart new technology solutions, it's allowing us to repurpose some of the work of staff and, more importantly, I think, not increase other staffing because we're able to automate and get to just more work overall.
Okay. Well, I hope we, I mean, all of us, we'll see that in the future. It isn't just your department. It's that we actually, the concept was, we, with all of our better software, we'd need fewer people. Not we need more people and more expensive software, but the reality seems to need, not just here, but everywhere, well, we need more people and we need more stuff, so costs just keep spiraling up. We never see the efficiencies in the bottom line. So we need to kind of watch that, and as we make the presentations, maybe you have to give us by next time a crib sheet you give us, but if we're going to put operations and include personnel, and it's a grab bag of all these costs, it would be helpful if each time we present how many people were added, so we know, no, we didn't add any people. So we know how much was just raises, how much was this reclassification we just went through, which is not every year. And you say, well, hey, 10% was class and comp, 5% this, and the rest, because I'm, and the rest was software, but when we lump it all together like this, if it isn't really broken out where we could see it, which would be helpful maybe on some of the future presentations, we can actually see, well, this is the personnel cost, and here, just so we understand better, rather than just, well, it's up and we, I can't really, I can't make teds or tails without, you know, I don't want to have to ask 100 questions these times, rather not bother you with those if it was explained in the way it was broken out to us. So it would save a lot of time and increase our understanding, so I'll leave it at that, but it's, we sort of need a little more of that detail. If operations is our big department, we just throw everything in it, then, you know, how much was, and sometimes it's just inflation. You can say, hey, inflation of, I didn't buy any more capital equipment, but all this, the new tractors cost 20% more or 50% more. We all need to understand that. I mean, so we, so we don't pound on you on the wrong things, you know? We really need to understand where, what's going on out there, the challenges you're facing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests to speak, so thank you, Mr. Pernovos, and our next group is human resources.
Thought I'd get a little more support from my audience, but maybe not. We'll see how this goes. Good afternoon. Kristi Tenter, Human Resources Director, and presenting the proposed fiscal year 2425 budget. As you will see from our first slide, we are probably one that Councilmember Freeman is saying is more the status quo, keeping it consistent from prior years, but we are looking at a $3.1 million proposed budget request. That overall is about a 3.5% change. We'll talk through some of those differences, but overall, roughly a $260,000 increase between personnel and operating costs. And as a reminder, our department is providing all people services predominantly on recruitment, retention, labor relations, training and development, employee engagement, benefit administration. So we'll talk through what a few of those operating changes look like, but again, moving from one year to the next, roughly a $25,000 operating budget change. Can someone advance my slide? Thank you. To highlight changes, again, very minimal, we were able to maintain or have minimal changes to operating costs. When you think about human resources, one of our primary functions is recruitment. Those recruitment have associated costs for training and onboarding examinations, pre-employment processes. So when we talk about expenses, when we hear proposals from my counterparts that are asking for new staff or changes in staff, those have associated costs. So really, our budget only reflects changes in those accounts. We saw the largest increase, 12%, in the salary and benefits, as you'll hear from, again, my counterparts and city manager's office. Those reflect having, let's see, 13 of our 17 staff are less than two years new to our department, very new and in our step program, so they have proposed salary increases in addition to any citywide increases or unit increases. And then our benefit costs with our CalPERS, we've had a lot of conversation over the years about that trend, represent the total cost to our salary and benefits package. We also incurred a larger-than-usual technology rental rates. Perhaps we just touched upon that, but HR has been looking at opportunities to streamline and automate programs. Some of you may be familiar or had new training this year through NeoGov. That is a system that we utilize, a public sector program that is broadly used for recruitment. Everyone applies. That's how we get people in the door. They apply through NeoGov. Trying to integrate more of those processes to automate and get rid of paper, but with that, the purchases. Last year, we had our capital purchase outlay proposed, and now we're seeing the rental rates come in for you using that software and having that software maintained. So again, operating costs to support core HR services throughout the city. At times, it feels like we were just here talking about what the year would bring, and looking back now, it's hard to categorize in just a few bullet points all the progress and the efforts that we've put into play, but I've highlighted four where I believe our most significant focus in time allocation and results has been derived. And first, we'll talk about our class and comp initiative. So when I came last year, we were in a time where we were finishing up labor relations and to enter into three-year term agreements with everyone, and it was something to be celebrated, but we also were discussing the opportunity to look at more classifications to drive recruitment and retention efforts through a compensation study. At that time, we had done a number of reopen our classifications, looking at salaries of about 12 classes and upwards of almost 300 employees, and we're really pleased with those efforts. We've now extended that. We've been able to impact another 16 classifications, roughly 260 employees, and are at the tail end of closing up some of those final adjustments. Where are we seeing the return? We're starting to see it come indefinitely. One example I can give is, at one point prior to our cost of living increases through our labor relations process and the class and comp, we had upwards of 14 vacancies for a very extended time period in our fleet division. Obviously, you can understand the impact that would have to many departments, not having those services readily available, but we are down to, I believe, our last one? Oh, got a three, sorry, three. Still great progress. We're down to our last three vacancies, and again, we're seeing that as we're making changes to the structure. We've also seen advances in our technology services, so we're down to just a couple, three, three's the golden number today, three in technology services, where, again, we were in the double digits in vacancies. So we're seeing returns on that and seeing progress that relates to services and service hours that are being provided. We also updated over 26 job descriptions in a meaningful way to modernize them because we want to attract that talent in. So making progress. Moving forward from class and comp, we're moving into recruitment activity. Year-to-date, we've hired 280 employees, 88 of those were temps. That's 10 over last year, year-to-date. Our vacancy rate has definitely shifted throughout this fiscal year. We've averaged about 190 as of today, with 11 new hires going through orientation at this moment. We are down to 161 vacancies, and so, again, making progress. At one point during the fiscal year, we had as many as 220 vacancies, a low of 152. So again, holding steady and continuing to make progress, as well as in our efforts to recruit and retain qualified police officer applicants. So making a lot of progress with recruitment activity. Oracle, we've already heard about our ERP from our city manager, but there is an HCM, Human Capital Management Process, or component of that system, of which our staff has been heavily involved in with payroll in the finance department. We kicked that off in January of '22 with the design elements of just what do we need the system to do and how do our current systems work to in order effective payroll and HR processing? And at this time, we have roughly seven individuals each week, myself included. They're engaged anywhere from five to 10 hours of development time. So we're definitely moving into testing, seeing progress, getting excited to launch this system, and are getting closer and closer to the finish line and hope to have a really robust tool that will give us more analytics, more people opportunities, and continue to automate and make employment easier for our team. The last thing we'll touch upon is labor relations. Again, we built out those labor terms of three years. It's been successful. We've started joint labor management sessions with our SEIU labor partners. I feel that we have an excellent relationship established with both our fire and police, who are both complete with class and comp at this point for their represented and police command staff. And we continue to have supervisory and management better-together calls to just talk about general themes and topics within our organization that are important to be ineffective and good stewards of our services. Lastly, I'll touch upon the Department of Justice. The Bakersfield Police Department is under a stipulated, entered into a stipulated agreement. There's a component of human resources, and so, again, things that HR maybe didn't anticipate when they came into these programs, but we have contributed and partnered in developing policy, documenting practices, and meeting with the facilitators, Jinson Hughes, on a regular basis to talk about how we can support and close out items on that. I'm very excited to move one of my items to full effective compliance, and that's another checkmark that we can put in the box and allocate our resources somewhere else. Highlights from our department, but I could sing the praises of the team for many, many slides, but in the sake of our time today, we'll move on to our personnel changes, which are none. Small but mighty, 17, the last three budget cycles, we've come in and not asked for additional staff. It's maintaining. We're in a growth period. Again, over, well over half of the staff are less than two years, so there's a lot of information exchange and knowledge building. But with that, I would share that last year, some of the data points that we showed of our comparator agencies and also some of the more reputable HR knowledge think tanks, SHRM, Society for Human Resources typically would recommend a 1 to 100 ratio for an HR, a centralized HR function with the level of programs we have, 1 to 150, they can vary. So again, as we encroach and pass that 2000 mark, 2005 approved employees, at this time, we're definitely a little on the lean side with 17 full-time staff to support the programs that we have, but a lot of great dedication and excitement and enthusiasm for what we do, so it keeps us moving forward. That concludes, so 3.5% increase, no personnel changes, predominantly to salary and benefits, very slight to operation to support the current initiatives. And with that, I'll close for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Tenter. I don't see any requests to speak. Okay, Vice Mayor, now you have questions. Too late.
You're too slow, too slow. I got.
Mighty but not fast, strong but not fast.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Actually, I just wanted to pay you a compliment and your team, and all the work that you've done has been tremendous. And, you know, as we ramped up and invested with PSVS over the years, it was a heavy lift for your department, and, you know, getting those job descriptions ready, starting those recruitment activities, organizing those efforts, working with all these various departments, it's a huge lift, and I think many times gets underappreciated and understated, especially at this dais, but there's a lot of work done, and we appreciate you. I, for one, very much appreciate you and your department. We know that people are our greatest strength, the greatest asset. That's not just a cliche. I mean, there's many of us on this dais who really believe that, and it's your department that really is that touch point, right? That first contact on behalf of the city for our people. And I want to thank you for really taking these efforts very serious and the recruitment and retention efforts, the hiring process, making sure we find the right people to bring into the city, but then also, while they're here, making sure that they're treated well and respected and that we create that environment that makes people want to stay and working for Bakersfield. And so kudos to you and to your team, of course, to the city manager. Thank you for all the effort and the work that you do day in and day out. I do have a question about the net gain regarding police officers, but I'll wait for the presentation with police.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I also appreciate the work that you've done over the years, and I always like to follow up at this time about your wellness program and how you're feeling about it. As robust as you would like, or we're not quite there yet?
I did anticipate that, Councilmember Smith, and I was going to choose my words carefully, but in all honesty, with the other priorities at this time, it has not been top level. I think that our benefits team has done some outstanding work, so we've been really trying to implement our Virgin Pulse app, has a lot of walking initiatives, reminders, health aspects. Having a diverse workforce as we do, it's really difficult, as I believe some of us have discussed in the past, of finding a one-size-fits-all, and so really encouraging different departments where they see wellness. So we have monthly trainings from our EAP, talk about wellness opportunities, whether it comes from, you know, financial savings to actual physical fitness to just work-life balance. We provide those opportunities to plant those seeds and continue a theme of wellness. In terms of activities, we have had some really fun, you know, walk, walking competitions where everyone's putting in their steps, not at the level that I would like to see for an organization of our size, and so we are at this time assessing how perhaps can we envelop blue zones more and use some of those resources. So we've been having some meetings and going out, so again, hoping to move through the ERP and some of the So again, hoping to move through the ERP and some of the DOJ aspects and then really make changes to where we've been.
Great.
So definitely tracking data, planting the seeds, moving it forward, and also our support and collaboration with the Bakersfield Police Department and their wellness initiatives. So, but opportunities, definitely, definitely opportunities.
Well, I'll challenge you to keep working hard on it, then.
I feel it, I do. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Well, being a small business owner and knowing how painful it is to hire new people, I have to be impressed by the fact that more than half of your staff are less than two years with you. So I just want to commend you for being able to pull that one off. And the team that you put together, it takes a lot of hard work to get to get a team that is cohesive and have the same goals in mind. And fortunately, I have that now, but it's taken years to get there.
Yes.
And, yeah. And so anyway, I'm just real proud of your team that they've come in and been able, because you've got a lot of work going on. And too, Kristi, I always appreciate your positive and bubbly and enthusiastic presentations. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tenter. And now finance, please.
Mayor, council. My name is Randy McEgan, Finance Director for the city. I thought the city attorney was up next, but that was relaxing because he's usually like 20 minutes. But anyways. So it's my pleasure to be able to present the finance department budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I wanted to start off by just focusing on, oh, does this not work? Let me just press the. Okay. I'm going to focus on our mission statement first off, because I rewrote this, I reworked it when I became Finance Director, had the opportunity to be advanced into it. And it really does focus in on both the council goal, as was previously mentioned, about an innovative and efficient government, and also related to our new guiding principles, stewardship. So as a department, we really focus on this idea of being efficient and also being good stewards, not just of our financial resources, but actually as stewards of the trust. We deal with a lot of outside entities related to purchasing. We deal with a lot of customers related to services we're providing. We deal with a lot of internal customers. We provide services and we want to be stewards of that trust, not only to the community, but also to the individual departments and the representatives behind me to provide the services they need to help them meet their goals. And so that mission statement really expands both, connects back to the city council goals and our guiding principles. So to meet that mission statement, we have a budget proposed of $4.8 million. As you'll see in the top section, that is the breakdown of our budget by function, personnel, operations, and capital outlay, and then how those, that operation is funded based on the various funding streams that we actually have within the city that fund the finance department. So as you see, we have a 10-point, basically a 10% increase proposed for the upcoming fiscal year. The primary increase is personnel. We'll talk about that in a bit. And then we have a slight increase, about a little less than 6% for operations. Wanted to highlight that operation increase specifically related to, it's a $50,000 increase. The primary driver of that increase is actually seen in that off-street parking, that $30,000 increase related to off-street operations. The finance department operates the 18th and 9th parking structure, and we're seeing significant increases related to security, operations of that equipment, and maintenance of that equipment. So that's the largest driver of that $50,000 increase, is that $30,000 you'll see in operation increases for the off-street parking and the parking facility on 18th and 9th. I'm going to talk a little bit more, next slide, please. Talk a little bit more about the increases. As we saw, the 10% increase, majority in salaries and benefits. So as other departments will have said and will continue to say, the largest increase in salaries and benefits relate to step increases, relate to cost of living increases, and relate to PERS. All of those drive our increases and are a significant driver, ongoing significant driver over the next couple of years to meet the needs and meet the needs of our personnel here. So that's the biggest driver of the 10% increase. We also had some internal increases related to rates, specifically from technology services, property and liability insurance costs increased. So that difference between the $30,000 that I just talked about is $20,000, and that's driven primarily by rate increases. Otherwise, the city operations are flat. We do not have any other new proposals, no new changes, no new projects, no new plans, no new CIP, but we are continuing to work on our ERP project, our enterprise resource planning project. We already talked about it, city manager, HR did, but I'm going to go ahead and continue with that theme. So we are, we went live with our financial piece about two months ago, and we continue to perfect that process. We have three more modules we're moving forward with. HCM was mentioned previously for HR and payroll. We have a community development module related to permits, business licenses, code enforcement. And then we have a utility billing service that will be going live related primarily through wastewater and solid waste billings. Those are all moving forward at different phases and different timeframes. As I said, we did the financial piece, we're perfecting those, that process. The HR, HCM piece is expected to go live, I would say, in the summer-ish. Same with the utility billing, late summer, early fall. And by next month, we anticipate that the community development module should go live sometime in late June. To get, again, meet our goals, we are not, no new proposals, so therefore no increases in staff or personnel costs. So we have 32 employees in our complement, and we will remain at 32. There's no need to increase our complement. And you'll see the breakdown of that complement of 32 employees between our four divisions, admin, treasury, accounting, and purchasing there. But again, no new changes there. So I wanted to go into another more global, broad scope beyond finance, just to kind of touch on our final financial, city financial reserves. In 2022, this council approved our city reserve policy, breaking out our reserves into three such funds or sections, our rainy day reserve, our facility replacement reserve, and the pension rate stabilization trust. So those three funding funds are established, and we have certain goals in each one of those. And as you'll see, the rainy day reserve is supposed to, if you recall, is supposed to cover two months of operating budget. The projected balance needed to meet that two-month reserve is, by the end of this year, is $58.5 million. We're going to talk about that. When we established this trust, we kind of, these reserve policy, we wanted to come up with a way to basically analyze. So we have budgeted, proposed additions to that trust, I'm sorry, to that reserve, but we still need to meet that 58. We're going to still need to have some action before the end of this fiscal year to meet the 58.5. So that is something to be put on your radar. It's currently going to be about $56.5 million by the end of the fiscal year. So we need to maintain that council-approved rate, we need to look at potential increases in this upcoming, in this current fiscal year. Our facility reserve, we have not added additional contributions. We're steady at about $5 million. We have that goal, but we need to have available funds to get to that $10 million. So we were going to be watching for available funds as we move forward in the upcoming fiscal year. And then that pension rate stabilization, we added $4 million a little over a year ago, and we are currently at $4.4 million. We have a budgeted increase of $1.3 million. At the end of this year, we will contribute that. It's based on the interest savings and pensions. And then we also have another $1.5 million budgeted in '24, '25 to add to that pension rate stabilization. Beyond that, I am available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. McEgan. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. You brought up the parking garage, and I've mentioned this a few times, and so I'm going to beat this horse, I guess, one more time. If we want to consider the parking garage an asset, then it seems to me we should look at what we're really getting from it. And as my understanding is, we park a lot of city cars there, and we do not charge for it. And so we look at it and we call it a liability when really we're not crediting the asset that it is by providing that parking. So I would hope that we look at that closer. Thank you.
We can definitely do that.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo the sentiment, Councilmember Smith, that makes a good point in that there are a number of city vehicles that are parked at the parking structure, and we ought to charge those departments, similar to how we charge technology services, for example, to various different departments, maintenance of vehicles. I don't think we're suggesting charging employees for employees parking at the structure, which I think is an important difference. We're, at least I would suggest that we charge those departments and not city employees. Because I do understand there are a number of employees who are parking as well. First and foremost, congratulations on all the work done thus far on the ERP system. This, again, is something that's really understated and underappreciated in our community, but is fundamental to city government and to providing basic services to city government. Talk about efficiencies and advancements, completely long overdue, but so thankful that because of PSVS, we're able to invest in this way, and certainly with your leadership and so many folks within the city, we're able to really work on this piece. It's like, you know, trying to function at City Hall while building a new complete City Hall at the same time. And I really appreciate it, and I know I try to communicate to the public really the gravity of this transition and what it means for the city. So thank you, and thank you, thank your team as well.
Absolutely. And I would, it's not just finance. I would want to emphasize, I mean, HR just mentioned it, they're putting a lot of work into it to a lot of other city departments, so it's not just finance. But it is a big lift. It's almost like another job in a lot of ways, and for some people.
Very excited about the pension rate stabilization funding. I'm really proud of our work here and how innovative we have become at saving dollars by making advance payments for our CalPERS annual payment as opposed to what we used to do. We used to make a monthly payment and then pay interest on that. Now we make a one-time payment at the beginning of the year, save $1.2 million, use that savings to go into our pension stabilization fund. I mean, it's genius. Thank you so much for all the work there. Super excited about it. Now, I have a question. We talked about, in your presentation, questions related to facility replacement reserve. I want to be clear, this is regarding city buildings, sitting facilities, correct?
That is correct. It really is a reserve in case of an emergency, that major repair is needed on a facility.
AC units, those types of things, right? Okay. So we don't consider under facilities our streets, bridges, city infrastructure?
Actually, it can be drawn upon in those cases. It just depends on, so we have, I have seen it done in infrastructure-related items as well.
Okay. So that's good to know. So as we continue to build out, you know, city continues to grow and expand, we're building new roads, new bridges, new infrastructure. Where do we analyze the future cost of road replacement or infrastructure replacement? Of course, the maintenance costs over time. Where does that show up on our assets and liabilities?
Sure. I believe, specifically with infrastructure, Public Works is really analyzing whether and when those repairs are needed. So it's part of their CIP program as opposed to this reserve policy or this reserve fund. Those, that process of analyzing when things need to get serviced, what repairs are due, is really done as part of the CIP program over five, 10 years. This specific reserve is really not meant to cover that. It's really, when something out of the ordinary occurs, we have to pull from that specific pot of money.
And if I may add, Vice Mayor, just a few thoughts to your question. We do have our pavement condition index that helps us measure in one way, but I think the reality is, is we don't really have a full, you know, asset liability sort of, you know, depreciation list for all of our city street infrastructure. We don't have that. Right now, Public Works is building a tool in our GIS system that can allow us to identify sidewalks, streetlights, and the like, because we don't also, I couldn't tell you today how many miles of sidewalk are we missing in the city, but we're starting to build that out. I think we can make some reasonable estimates on what would it cost us to increase our pavement condition score by a certain amount. We've done that type of homework, but admittedly, I don't think we have sort of an asset list of, you know, when we think we're going to need every road to be repaired. So Mr. McEgan's correct, we look at that over about a five-year period, and we say, based on our pavement condition index and some more specific looks at our arterials and collectors, what are the streets that in a five-year timeframe we think need to repair the most? That's really the approach we've been taking up to this point. And then lastly, I would also just add that we are looking at some of our other, you know, street infrastructure from a standpoint of, you know, complete streets and looking at where we need to do, build out of complete streets that have curb-rider sidewalk, again, street trees, medians, full medians, and, you know, also bicycle pedestrian infrastructure, mapping that out through our safe routes. And so we have identified several areas through our safe routes to schools, exercise on a map as well where those gaps are, and it's telling us a lot about where we have some of those big gaps. But I couldn't give you a number of, here's, you know, what it would take to take, you know, all our roads, you know, up to, you know, fully repaired, and that's, but that is a good exercise. We want to head in that direction, but we're not there today.
Okay, I really appreciate that. And the reason why is because I, reading all these stories about other cities that are in very tough financial situations this next fiscal year, and it's, you know, one of the driving forces is all of this deferred maintenance, all of these real issues that they need to address within their local communities. And if you look at where we were pre-Measure N, I mean, in the, in the presentation to all of our community stakeholders, we outlined some of those stressors, the fact that we had grown significantly in land size, and we had additional parks and additional roads and vehicle, you know, all of these different things that had contributed to a lot of the stress on our financial health. And so as we look towards our future, I don't want Bakersfield to find itself in the same situation in five, 10 years from now. And so the more that we can do this analysis today, the better off I think we are. So I appreciate all the effort there. Appreciate you thinking about that one.
Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. McEgan, for your presentation. And a couple of weeks ago, I thanked you personally for your conservative approach. And it is, I'm very, I'm very happy to hear, and I totally agree with my colleague, Vice Mayor Gonzalez, that we need to be thinking ahead, and you're doing that. You and our city staff and city manager are not allowing our city to go into a place of debt and just, you know, despair. So I really appreciate your approach.
Thank you.
With the cost continually going up every year, benefits, inflation, this rainy day fund has got to be protected with your life. And it's not only has to be protected, but it has to grow because things are, the costs are going to continue to go up. So I'm curious, as I know what our target is, 58.5 million, but where are we presently in that?
By the end of the current fiscal year, we expect to be about 56.5. So we'll need an additional allocation to get to the 58.5.
So we're only about 2 million away from it.
Yeah.
Very good. That's excellent news. Talking about streets, it just jogged my memory, so I'm just going to bring you this up real quick. On my way here today, I noticed that on Oak Street, south of California, the median is about one to two inches tall now, where all the other medians are, you know, six inches or so. And of course, there's somebody standing there with a sign on, right in the middle of the road with really no median protecting him at all. So if you could, I'm going to make mention of that today, maybe that's something we can look into. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on the infrastructure comments also, and maybe it's for Public Works, but I know with the water department, you know, we, we look at, raise the rates substantially because of our deferred maintenance, and I think we've also done the same thing. because of our deferred maintenance and, and I think we've also done the same thing with sewer, and I'm not sure that our sewer enterprises has looked at that. I know when we looked at our downtown sewer system, there was substantial improvements and I'm not sure that we've really addressed how we're going to improve those at this point, and I think that that should happen.
Yeah, real quickly, Councilmember Smith, on that last point, well, let me stop and say, on your general point about just infrastructure across the board, yes, we need to be planning and thinking ahead on the downtown sewer. We had a series of what I would characterize as smaller investments, meaning, you know, half a million, a million dollars that we built into the rates to do the manhole upgrades in downtown and a couple of other, other aspects from the downtown storm sewer study. We've also used some of those ARPA dollars to do some of those more surface level, you know, sewer improvements and a couple of big storm water improvements in downtown. But then the bigger improvements were farther in north downtown and we still need to create those PSAs in future budget years, but it's a good reminder, we need to get at that sooner than later because, well, you know, there's likely to see developments start to occur in some of those areas. And so need to, you know, create those formations of those, basically service districts. But we, we just haven't, you know, that timeline on those was assumed to be a sort of five, 10 years out from the study, but we're getting close to five years on the study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKeegan. And next will be City Attorney, and then we'll take a brief break after that. Oh, no, but there's, didn't come through, but Councilmember Freeman.
Sorry.
Or you canceled it if you hit it twice.
I had a, I had a few. First, I will, I gotta congratulate you, I look at you, you've had the same number in your department, similar to personnel, to Christie's for four, five years. I don't know how you do it. That's, that's just amazing management, because the city's grown, it, it means you're handling more work efficiently. That's kind of a beautiful chart to see that, so congratulations, we do appreciate that. Another question I had is, if you have it today, it's, it's a little, it's a little mention at the bottom, one of your slides is managing the pension, and we talked about cash flows and the biggest item, I think, in our cash flow is the payment of our pension obligations. And there's the current pension obligation, which I think we try to have at least the amount we owe now current and pay that, but we have a massive accrued liability of all the years we didn't pay. And I wondered if you still have that slide or if that's, that says, oh, you used to have this slide that, we, we estimate over the years, you know, it's 430 million a day, but it's going to, in 15 years, start to curve down. Can you at least tell us, how much is that deferred liability, which everybody, that's just a bill we can't pay. It's when our taxes came due, we just didn't pay them. When our pension bill came to us, we said, we have no money for 20 years in a row. We have no money, we just didn't pay it. And Cal turns brilliantly, said, okay, we'll loan you, let's start a loan with some money to pay the interest on it. We're exactly like federal government, exactly, building this massive deficit and no one talks about it, but it is all of our people's pensions and they depend, and the payment goes up every single year. The extra payment is 20 million, and then next year it's 25, the next year, that's the extra on top of paying the current. So I think when we talk about budget finance, we need at least bring some of this, mention it, that we have to be aware of it, because it's a primary obligation we have and kind of, how is that going? When's it going to start moving down again?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Freeman, be happy to discuss this. So we actually presented our pension, basically, projections to budget and finance a couple months ago, but I, if, if we can do the same in a council workshop, if, if you'd like, but we do have continual increases of the unfunded liability. It expects, it expects to go up about five to six million dollars until 2030. So, and then we, in theory, we begin to see a ramping down of that payment and eventually getting it paid off by 2045, I believe. But we have, we have that chart, it's, it basically projects it out.
Just, how much is the payment of, we'll call it, not the basic pension, the, just the negative amort, the part we're paying for the deferred liability, the extra we pay every year? What's that this year?
Yeah, I'm, I don't want to give you the wrong number. I know that we're, we're paying about, about 35, 40 million dollars a year this year, but then it'll go up to that's about 60 to 70.
That's the deferred part to pay.
No, that's the total contribution. So I, I would have to give you the split, I don't want to give you the wrong number on the split between the, what's called the, the unfunded liability portion and the, and the current portion. So I, I don't want to give you the wrong numbers, but it does, we can definitely give you, and I could send it separately if you'd like, of the, of the breakdown between the two.
Maybe you could just give us the presentation you did to the budget, just a quick, be nice, so how much is the deferred portion that we're amortizing over, I don't know, 25 years?
Yeah.
Just so we know, and that's the part that goes up each year, correct?
It, it goes up usually when CalPERS doesn't perform as they intend to on their investments, yes, which has happened in the last couple of years.
Well, just to pay off the, the 400 and whatever million bill we have, to pay that off, we have to increase it every single year, don't we?
That is correct. And they amortize it out over 25 years.
They want it paid off.
They would like it paid off, yeah, so would we, so.
Okay. And then one other follow-up, because two of our council people mentioned it. We have enterprise funds for many, a number, I think, of our infrastructure type things, so the money will be there, which is a great concept. I wish, you know, in, in Homer Association, you have to, you know, there's reserve and you have to show, you have to pay every month to replace that street. The money has to be there for the, everything, it's streetlights, everything that, you know, is private inside there has to be paid, including the street, the repavement, the re-everything. And cities get in trouble because we don't have a similar mechanism. And I was just wondering if both as we move forward to future approved projects, I guess this is a question for city manager and city attorney, can we change that so that, number one, for at least future projects, that every, twice a year or every month, whatever, you have an assessment, not just for, they have to pay for the landscaping out in front, we're assessing them for that, so that Rick's department has the money. Can we do it for, and I don't know if streetlights are included in that, but can we not do it for at least the, the city streets that we've taken over so that someday, you know, when we have to replace them, we have a fund? Is that against the law to do something like that? Is there any way a council could vote for at least the future subdivisions we approve to do something like that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I'd need to chat with you a little bit more in-depth about what you're looking for, but right off the bat, I think you have a Prop 218 issue.
Because even on a future one, that hadn't been created yet.
You'd still have a Prop 218 issue and they have to sign a ballot and, and what goes into that, but it's still covered under Prop 218.
Well, I'd be interested in at least hearing the explanation, because my next question is, even if it took a public vote, is there any way for all the ones that are in existence now, could you form that kind of, call it enterprise fund, because I don't have a better description, if people voted on it and said, yeah, we, we have 140 square miles of city and all these streets and no way to fund them and we don't know? So, I mean, it's a pretty serious problem that other cities run into. Is there, you know, how, how could you do it, I guess is my question, even if it took public votes? How could one do that so that you are just properly budgeting for your city's infrastructure? That's, that's my question.
I'm going to defer to the city manager on this.
Yeah, I think, well, my recommendation, that, that is a, a good topic, but probably a link or whatever, an in-depth topic that we take that to committee.
Yeah, I know we can't.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Councilmember Freeman had made regarding the unfunded liability. I wanted to gain some clarity for the benefit of the council and also the public, in that the unfunded liability growth is not merely a function of the money that we did not pay into, it's also a function of, well, the performance of CalPERS primarily, also the, the various different studies related to, you know, the, the future health of the fund, longevity rates and all of that. And so there are times where cities actually pay off their unfunded liability where it's zero dollars, only to find that unfunded liability grow in subsequent years. So can you help us?
That is correct. I didn't want to get into, because I thought I could be helpful with the actual presentation, but the, the amount that we pay every year includes the current cost of what our benefits we're earning, so that is paid. We do not defer or hold off any, but we have to pay CalPERS that. So that unfunded liability portion is actually a, a result of either changes in the plan that CalPERS initiated or the lack of returns on their investment. So it's not the city holding back funds, it is basically after the fact, we are told we owe an additional amount because they didn't earn enough or they did change the plans and changed the distributions and that type of thing. So we're not holding it up, we're just getting the bill after the fact and then we're paying that every year. It is actually our bill, absolutely, but we don't, we're not told we are owed that amount until they, they give the actuaries to us and they say, okay, this year, your unfunded liability has now increased by, let's throw in a couple million dollars. That's basically the process.
Thank you, Mr. McKeegan. Mr. McKeegan, I've been in DC and Sacramento a number of times this last month with my fellow mayors and they, many of them ask me, how large a deficit do you have? They're bemoaning their own deficits. And because of your prudent management, we're able to say we don't have one. So thank you to you and your team, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gennaro, and then we'll take a quick break. After that, I know she'll be very efficient in her presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Julie, I think you're going to run my slides, right? Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Jenny Gennaro, your city attorney. I will be presenting for you this afternoon, the 2024, 2025 proposed budget for the city attorney's office. As you can see, last year, our adopted budget was a little over 2.5 million. This year, it has gone up a little bit, up to 330,000. And if you flip to the next slide, you will see that the major component of the increase is the $263,000 in salary and benefits, but the smaller component, the $67,500 figure, really is an increase on two line items within our budget. Now, one of them is an increase in the expense that we use for litigating non-tort items, those are for experts, and the other is the line item that has to deal with non-tort costs. And so again, the non-tort items would be the litigation matters that concern personnel and unfortunately, we are handling a very high number of personnel lawsuits, the highest in my career here with the city. And the other non-tort matters would be breach of contract cases, and again, that's primarily associated with the TRIP projects. On the right side of that slide, you can see some of our departmental highlights for the past fiscal year. As the city manager indicated, we are in a very active litigation portion of our history. We are currently, as I sit here today, managing 89 active litigation cases. Having said that, I think on the, on the positive side is seven of those state matters were actually handled in-house with our current deputy city attorneys and they were all settled and disposed of without any settlement monies being paid. We also disposed of 32 litigation matters using our outside council entities. You know that that is Marty Rosin and Cohen for primarily our police litigation matters and Clifford and Brown for the non-police matters. I don't think I'll ever sit up here and say this again, but they actually disposed and resolved 32 of those matters, most of them with zero monies being paid. The maximum amount, the maximum amount was $25,000, you will not see that again. And finally, I think really the, the most, the major accomplishment in the municipal arena was that last bullet where our office provided the legal guidance and I think Mr. Rednick, I know Mr. Rednick completed some of those initial steps that were essential to establishing the Bakersfield Community Land Trust, which I know has been a, a goal of the, the council and of the vice mayor for some time. And when you go to the last slide, really, again, our, our complement has remained the same. You see there's 11, 11 positions, the one that has remained vacant for quite some time is the assistant city attorney position. We did hire one deputy city attorney, it's, although Mr. Cullum is in our complement, his entire salary is dedicated and coming from the Water Department as he is primarily a water litigation issues attorney. But other than that, there have not been any personnel changes and I don't foresee any with additions or subtractions in the immediate future. And with that, I am open to your questions.
Thank you, colleagues. Are there any questions? I don't, I don't see any questions, Mr. Gennaro. Thank you so much. It's amazing to be able to see these types, these types of results. They're very rare and we are fortunate to have you and your team. Thank you. Let's take a break, 10 minutes and we'll be back at 1:50. Just felt like doing it. Somebody close the back door, please, and then let's gather back. And our Recreation and Parks Director will be entertaining us with recreational jokes until we're ready to start. Mr. Freeman? We are. We're starting right now. All right, go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon. For the record, Rick Anthony, Director of Recreation and Parks. Before I get started, I certainly want to acknowledge just the great team effort from Recreation and Parks and acknowledge our Assistant Director, Darren Budak, our Fiscal and Admin Service Officer, Rajan Misri, Keith Howar, Park Superintendent, and Fidel Gonzalez, Park Construction and Facility Planner. Through my three years here, I continue to be impressed with the dedication and commitment of those individuals. And certainly, a department our size and as diverse as we are, we would not be able to accomplish the things we do without a great leadership in place. My budget today presenting is $42.5 million, which represents about an 8% increase. And very similar to my other colleagues, a lot of those increases are related to salary projections, utility, and risk and fleet rates increasing. There's a little bit of additions in our capital outlay, and that is a result of some of our projects shifting from PSVS as well as adding a few more capital projects, which we'll highlight a little bit later. Again, you can see some of the increases to our budget. If I can really just skip to a lot of our highlights, we have done a very significant job in kind of spreading a lot of our improvements across the city. And mainly, a result of that is from our PRI account, which is Park Amenities, renovation and improvements. I do want to thank the council and city manager for supporting that project a few years ago. It really has been a game changer. And citywide and every ward, you can see some of the improvements that we've been able to do in the park. And we also will highlight some of those with a few pictures later on today. We continue to seek funds and grants for MLK project as we move through conceptual to designs. We have a grant that we recently submitted with the federal government that we're hoping to land. We'll know more about that in sometime in November. As well as highlighting a lot of the other work that we're doing to include our drought tolerant, our turf replacement program, where we're putting drought tolerant plants in a lot of our medians. Hopefully, some of you have seen those results. Really, a great benefit of that is not only is it reducing a lot of our maintenance on our streetscapes, but also saving us a tremendous amount of water in doing so. Our personnel changes, no personnel changes. Really want to talk a little bit about the way our department has kind of restructured and we've taken a lot of our unskilled labor vacancies and converting them into areas of need, both in our maintenance department as well as our storm team, which actually resulted in a decrease of one position this year. What's unique about our department, obviously, is every year, we're adding streetscapes, we're adding acreages. And this year, we will be adding a total of 10 acres in new streetscapes, five acres on bike path maintenance, five acres for Lanell Brahma, as well as the potential to add nine to 10 acres at Mason Moran sometime this fall when that is complete. So again, just a lot of work that we're doing by keeping our maintenance staff and our personnel staff equal. We know that when you do the math, that this doesn't equate, but we are having conversations, not only with the city manager, but with HR, to talk about expanding a little more into our contract services so that we don't have to continue to have ongoing costs with personnel. And you'll hear, certainly hear a little bit more of that as we continue on. Before we get to questions, just wanted to highlight some of our accomplishments, mainly those from PRI. And as you can see, this gives us the ability to make, you know, a lot of varied changes and improvements in many of our parks. And these are some of the examples of things that we have already done. Mostly, a lot of that investment is in shade. Both we're shading playgrounds and benches as well as rest areas on the bike trail. Speaking a little bit about playground equipment, we recently had a Love Your Park campaign in partnership with the Blue Zones, and we're able to retrofit some of our older parks with exercise equipment. It was received quite well from the community and we plan to continue that effort in this next budget. A few of our large accomplishments, in partnership with ECD, we're able to open Sunset Mayflower Park, a small urban pocket park on the east side of Bakersfield. I don't have pictures for all of the things that we've done, but we're also, we were successful with completing five new football fields at the Bakersfield Sports Village for Golden Empire Football, as well as currently working on a complex at Jastro to complete the pickleball courts. And so those things will be, will be done very shortly in this year, as well as Lanell Brahma. We're making a lot of progress there and we're hoping that park will be ready to open before summer hits. Again, I already talked a little bit. These are some pictures of our turf replacement project, which has been very successful. And we're actually improving that moving on. We've met with a few community groups and talked about their thoughts about how the progress that we've made and how we may continue to enhance, especially with some of our developers that are doing some work in the nearby areas. With that said, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony, and thank you also for your partnerships with community groups. I know yesterday you were out there with the Sound of Bakersfield, partnering with the Downtown Business Association, providing probably six or seven bands and a number of vendors. So thank you for bringing engagement to downtown Bakersfield. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. It's, you know, exciting, all the stuff that's going on with parks and the changes you've made since you've came on. So appreciate you very much. And specifically, you got a picture of the shade on the bike path. I like that. Took a while to get it there, but thank you very much. Always like to remind at this time, the pole ground rail fencing, especially since we're not, most of that's contracted, I think, now out there. And I'm not sure how you're keeping track of it, but just to make sure that we keep an eye on that and keep it maintained up. And your exercise equipment there at Era Park needs to be replaced. So if you can put that on your list or if it's not already. So do appreciate it, though. Lots of good things. Thank you.
Hi, Smear.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Anthony, thank you for all of the work. Thank you to your whole team. Incredible amount of effort and a lot of capital projects, particularly in Ward Two, that our constituents have benefited from. And so I just want to thank your whole team for all their hard work. Most notably, you know, the work that was done at the Pocket Park, Sunset Mayflower Pocket Park was really exciting and I continue to receive feedback from a lot of my constituents there in, throughout the MLK Boulevard area who love that park. Saunders Park, Lowell Park improvements, Sister City Garden, the new fencing looks tremendous. So again, kudos to your team. I really appreciate it. I also appreciate our quarterly check-ins where we're able to go through various different parks. Clearly, it's, it's obvious, you know, Ward Two has the most historic parts of town, so our parks are, you know, many of them are 100 years old. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of need, but I look forward to a lot of the future projects, in particular, Jastro Park Stage, the bandstand, getting at Bill Park and all those other, other projects as well that we're, we have in the pipeline. So again, thank you. And to the mayor's point, you know, thank you for all the work that you're doing with, with supporting community events. We had the East Bakersfield Festival on Saturday at Jefferson Park with Children First, about over 2,000 people in attendance and utilizing that park in a really effective way. And the stage was out there and Recreation and Parks was a great partnership, a great partner in that, in that effort. The Park Rangers were there the whole day. It was fantastic. So thank you for all the work. Thank you for, thank, thank you to the Park Rangers as well for all of their work. The community really appreciates it.
Thank you.
I don't see any other requests to speak. Thank you, Mr. Anthony.
Thank you.
And next we'll have Development Services. And you know, as the day goes on, you have to be more engaging. Don't feel any pressure. Just keep us entertained.
Thank you, Mayor. You're almost encouraging a lack of brevity. I'm not sure what to do at this point in juncture. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Development Services Budget for 2425. It's absolute pleasure. Much like other departments, you're seeing about a 13% rise and almost all of those costs are associated with funds out of our control, whether that's salary, benefits, technology services, fleet, soon-to-be parking structure, those things that we largely don't have any control over. The goal of Development Services Department is to provide exceptional professional and technical services while providing exemplary customer service from application to occupancy, and I think we accomplish that on a day-to-day basis. Let's take a little bit deeper look at the small ask that the department is asking for your support today. There is a request for a $40,500 educational assistance to help us with our retention. Provides us more educated employees while at the same time giving us added value on a day-to-day basis. Website enhancement. There's been some open dialogue over time that the city's, although has made progress in its online permitting and plan check process, the Development Portal, the Development Center on our website falls short of providing tools to help the development community to transition into an online format. There aren't a lot of tutorials or other, other guides that might help our development community take advantage of these enhancements to our development process. I've proposed a small stipend to make targeted improvements to our website to make that Development Center site work much more better than it does currently. And then there is one request for a planning position, and I'll elaborate more on that in my next slide. In terms of departmental highlights, the city, City's Development Services Department has completed a lot of the precursors to a successful housing element, whether that's a comprehensive update to its residential zoning or comprehensive rezoning efforts to bring about conformance with the state's regional housing need allocations. And all of those should lead to an adoptable housing element in the very near future. We have ongoing general plan efforts, soon to be taking a workshop to the City Council to talk about land use alternatives, which is a real stepping stone into the formation of your, of your general plan. We continue to make updates to our electronic permitting and plan checking and we'll be launching Clarity, which is the enhanced front-end portal for the user here in the very near future. And I'll talk a little bit more about the, some of the, some of the things that the department, pardon me, that the council has provided last year's budget, but we did implement a legal dumping enforcement. We did take on vacant commercial building registration programs through our special projects team and we'll look at some of their successes over the last year. In terms of personnel, there is, the 111 employees that are proposed do not include that new employee. The newest employee, Mr. Jordan Walker, would be in the back row, is an analyst too, will help the city implement its Climate Resiliency Planning Grant, as well as being active in seeking out additional grant dollars that will, the city will be able to target towards any one of a number of projects. There are a lot of grant dollars out there. Development Services is anxious to, to start to be more competitive in securing those. Breakdown of the department, Mr. Walker, as well as my business manager, Ms. Cotera, are part of those six individuals that work for Development Services overall. There are 31 in our Building, Building Plan Check and Inspections Department, 18 in our Planning Department, 56 in our Code Enforcement, both for a Rapid Response Team and Regular Code, for a total of 111. A little bit about the Senior Mobility Planner. Many cities today look at their circulation element as their mobility element. Councilmember Freeman has noted a concern about streets and the cost of maintaining them, and that's a realistic concern. Streets into the future need to be more multimodal. You're seeing restriping and repurposing of street sections to better utilize that, those street corridors and to enhance the ability for multimodal transportation around town. The Mobility Senior Planner, there will be tasked with integrating themselves not just into the planning side, but into the, into the public work side in, in better defining how to utilize our public rights away in developing better mobility for our citizenry into the future. And that's a valuable position. Combined with Mr. Walker and his efforts on the, on the climate resiliency side, it's almost like you're seeing the gentle formation of a sustainability section within Development Services, and it's something that we need to look hard at moving out into the future. So what's happened here with our numbers? At first, when my Code Enforcement Section delivered me my numbers, you might note last year, my favorite line was, "The only thing that hasn't gone down was complaints." Well, complaints, along with virtually every other number here, save for contacts, went up. Why? Well, part of that is your investments in the last year. We expanded our Rapid Response Teams to have a night crew. And you might note that that night crew is, along with our, our regular day staff, has addressed 4,555 encampments. But note that there hasn't been additional contacts. Many, many sections that have talked about our Code Enforcement Response and our, and our homelessness issues, including Vice Mayor Gonzalez at a recent City Council meeting, talked about those hard-to-reach individuals. And what you're seeing there is those hard-to-reach individuals that the city touches, has multiple touchpoints over the course of the last year. And, and they've caused quite a bit of, of work on the part of your Rapid Response Teams as well as your parks programs, your, your impact teams, our flood ministries teams, all of the teams that are put together, Park Rangers. But by and large, I see that as being really the root of that problem here. Our trash is up, complaints are up, encampments are up, contacts are stable. And the boardups, that's a part of your special projects team. You asked us to be more, more responsive to boardups and, and create strategies to address vacant properties. That's what you're, what you're seeing there, the continuation. That, that team is now fully built where it wasn't before. So we talked about 4,555 encampments. That boils down to 12 a day. So every day, we go from before to after 88 encampments a week on average this past year. A little bit deeper dive into Code Enforcement's numbers in terms of the neighborhood vitality side of that. I noted we stood up our special projects team and we're in process with six receiverships. One of those has been completed, others are, have been submitted, and I think the remaining three or four are, have their applications ready to go to court on those receiverships. We got a half FTE for our waste tire abatement program last year from grant funding, and you can see the major improvements in waste tire improvements that are born out of being able to capture some, some other dollars to address that issue. Council has asked for more proactive campaigns, and I think the reason why our responsiveness complaints hasn't gone up is because our proactive activities within our neighborhood Code Enforcement have doubled over the past year. So you're seeing more stable neighborhoods as a rule. Talk a little bit about the Building Division. I would note that the Building Division's numbers at face value have gone down on the left-hand side, your valuations, they've dropped. But if we took into the fact the state and PG&E altered our solar permitting processes, you would find that we might be having a banner year as relates to development. The Building Division is very busy, and if you took the same permits, permit numbers for those solar permits, over 3,900 last year, you might find that we'd be having another stellar year in the number of permits issued. In the end, the Building Division's revenue is up, is 120% of what was projected. So the outlier is solar permitting and, but, but the Building Division still has remained very busy. In terms of the Development Services Planning Division, there are many, many long-range projects that are actively being engaged in, and they are large projects being addressed by a hard-working staff of 18. But in the end, even this department has, is, has 118% of, of revenue projected to close out this year. So they've been very busy at the same time. That said, throughout every presentation I've ever made here as it relates to budget, I want to end by thanking the hard-working 111 employees of the Development Services Department. I couldn't be prouder to serve as their director, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Lots of, like you say, heavy lifting stuff going on in the general plan moving. On the number of permits, I, kind of for me, the R1 permits are, you know, how, how we're doing, and I don't see that number.
We're averaging, right now, the way we count permits has changed a little bit in terms of residential because it's by dwelling unit now, not by single-family residential. But so far, at the, at the quarter-mile mark, we, we had 525 dwelling units, and that would translate into 2,100 units for the year. So it's, although it's an up and down uncertainty as it relates to the building industry right now, the residential building industry, the net sum is there's some stability in terms of, we look to be having at least an average year.
Thank you.
I don't see any other requests to speak, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll move on now to the next group, which is Economic and Community Development.
He's so much taller than me. Okay, here we'll do this. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. All right, here we go. So the Economic and Community Development Department, in the now four years that we've been a department, we've had quite a bit of shifting and we're seeing shifting again this year. And so we have homeless services returning to our department, which is going to change some of our increase-decrease. So we are having an increase of 23% to our total expenditures. With homeless services, it's not just staffing. There's a lot of grant funding that's associated with that and a lot of projects. And so they are actually coming back in, almost $9 million is what they're going to bring in an increase. And how we've offset that so that our increase is actually $5 million, only $5 million. There's been some changes to some programs that we do, such as we're reducing, requesting a reduction to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from $5 million to $3 million, so that's a reduction of two. Community revitalization is also one of them that we'll be reducing from $3 million to $2 million, and then removing the downtown redevelopment of 1.5. There's also a couple of other changes to EOA and our business assistance that are being suggested. So that's where we said, that even though we have an increase of 23%, it's that division being returned, and then some changes to offset in other ways. So our new proposals, like I said, homeless services, there's three individuals that are in that division, returning to the department. There is a request for emergency shelter capacity of 1.5 million, and then a 2.5 million request in ARPA for the open-door network construction of 100 units. We did do, like I just talked about, the $5 million reduction or shift to PSVS projects and programs. So some of the things that we're hoping to offset with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we've always used it to leverage dollars in other ways. So previously, with Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we took that $5 million and leveraged it for local housing trust fund dollars and received an additional $3 million. This time, there's a lot of conversations happening with Prop One. Behavioral Health Services would be the beneficiary of that, but how do we get more housing units through that? And so we are starting to meet with them. We have quite a few developments in our pipeline that have gone through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, NOFA, in years past. And so we think we'll be able to leverage other dollars for the trust fund that we still continue to see the units increase in the community. What have we accomplished? I'm really proud of the accomplishments that we have. We have quite a few relationships with our community members, and so Cap K, they completed their 20,000-foot expansion of the food distribution, their food bank warehouse. HAP, we have utilized HAP funding, which so far in total has been almost $19 million. And so using those HAP dollars to assist in addressing homelessness. We have new partnerships with Kern Health Systems and Kern Medical to facilitate an effective homeless service delivery system at the emergency shelter, as well as with mental health services. We completed 15 community development block grant projects, and some of those include the curb gutter sidewalks. We did East Truxton, Oleander, Alta Vista, and Benton with the helps of Public Works, obviously. They're actually the ones who worked on the construction of that. There were two lighting projects at Holtby and Sunset. We facilitate assistance with the Senior Center, Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance. We have a home access program which provides ADA to low-income homeowners so that they have access to their homes. We've worked on park projects, as mentioned in Mr. Anthony's presentation, about $800,000, some fencing for at Saunders Park. We have the partnership with Cap K for the food bank, also the Friendship House Solar Project Phase One, and then they did a sports field lighting. And all of that is through CDVG. Habitat for Humanity, we did a workforce development, funding for their program, and then the mission, they replaced all the ovens and freezers to serve their guests. And so we really try to make sure that those CDVG funds go as far as they can, and it served over 60,000 low, moderate income community members. We partner with the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, the Housing Authority, and Flood Outreach Services to administer the California State Encampment Resolution Grant, and that specifically was set aside to house homeless community members that were living along state highways and the Kern River. were living along state highways and the Kern River. Some other things, our housing division with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund completed two-hundred-and-two housing units. Sometimes it's hard, because we track this annually from January one to December thirty-first, but for the budget year, two-hundred-and-two units were completed. There were eighty units that were rehabbed for individuals. We currently have under construction two-hundred-and-fifty-one units, and then four-hundred-and-sixty-four units in pre-development for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. For our Economic Development Division, we assisted thirty-four businesses with over one point two million in the economic opportunity area business improvement and expansion grants. Here's just a couple photos of the projects that were accomplished with that. They can use those funds for a variety of things. It's for facade improvements, it's to relocate their business into certain areas, it's tenant improvement, just a variety of options that really give the most flexibility to our small We also were awarded the Transformative Climate Communities Grant in the amount of twenty-two million dollars, and we're looking forward to receiving our final application so that we can get those funds encumbered and start to utilize those programs. But we're working with our project partners, and the state did award us a hundred thousand dollars to keep moving with those project partners. It was a reduction in our original ask, and so some of that is finding an equitable way to keep projects moving for the most benefit that we have. And then for small business support, there was also an entrepreneurship grant program. We worked with three technical advisors and then provided one point five million to entrepreneurs in the amounts of five, ten, twenty-five, or forty thousand dollars. So far, we've supported sixty-two businesses, and, you know, that's not even halfway through the funding. And so we do look forward to the remaining businesses that we support. And then there was also a Business Security Improvement Grant that was released last July. The first round of funding we had for five hundred thousand was encumbered within the first five months. There was a phase two that was released, and we are now wait-listing those, and that funding was spent within two months. And so clearly, it was something that our business partners were looking for. It provided cameras or lighting, in this case, fencing to secure the business even better. We called it site hardening. So with that, we're not requesting any personnel changes this year. You can see, like I said, our department has seen a lot of fluctuations since it was established in twenty-twenty, looking at twenty-three for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and that jump between twenty-three, twenty-four is homeless services returning to our department.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question on the completed affordable housing units and the rehab units. I mean, you don't do construction.
I do not.
And you don't, you don't fund them a hundred percent. What exactly happens that you're talking about there?
So what we do annually is a NOFA of our different funding resources. And so the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which in the past, PSVS, has provided five million to that, like I said, then we went and leveraged that for three million from local housing trust fund. But we also have home dollars, other grant opportunities, and so when we do that NOFA, people submit projects that they would like to see developed. Frequently, we're the first dollar in, and so, for example, Renaissance at Baker wanted to get tax credits. You need to be able to show that you have some leverage, and they have utilized our funding resources to get other tax credits. One who just received their tax credit is Auburn Apartments, and so those look to be going under construction, it's forty units. But the city was really kind of the first dollar in, and because they had that, they were able to leverage other resources. And so when people go for tax credits, it's shown that it takes four to eight different funding sources in order to complete the project, and so we are one of those resources. Typically, we've been about ten percent plus or minus. Oh, we also had home ARP dollars, that was one that went into the NOFA, and so we just do that annual, gather whatever resources we can, try to leverage it against other resources, just to provide that flexibility to affordable housing developers that have some type of resource to get the tax credits. The tax credit market is getting more and more difficult and more and more competitive because it's one of the last remaining viable resources. The state this year with their budget deficit is not going to be releasing their SuperNOFA through the housing and community development, which makes tax credits one of the only resources available to our developers. And so this is a way to make them more competitive for their project.
So you actually initiate all of these?
And so these are projects that requested funding through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, NOFA, whether it's our PSVS, our local housing trust fund. There's also like permanent local housing allocation that we receive. In the past, we received SB two funding. So the developers apply to the NOFA, and we provide some kind of funding in this count of two-hundred-and-two units that were constructed.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation, and again, good job to your staff on all the various fronts that you're advancing the city's mission. In particular, I want to thank you for all the work with, with regard to our grants that we provide in our respective EOAs. So Old Town Kern, Downtown, Southeast Bakersfield, so many businesses, or local businesses and property owners have been able to benefit from these grants and really leverage that public investment with private dollars and advance their, their business in really profound ways. And all of these smaller projects really have a cumulative impact in the overall well-being of, of downtown and the respective neighborhoods of Old Town Kern and Southeast Bakersfield. So I want to thank you for all that work and your team's work in, in working with those business owners in the community. I really think that the best revitalization of downtown and surrounding neighborhoods is incremental, right? It's continuous, it's ongoing, it's step-by-step, and it, it's steady. And these EOAs really allow for that private investment and ongoing revitalization, where we've seen many downtowns and other cities across the country decline through the pandemic. Bakersfield's downtown has only advanced and only continues to get better and better. And so just want to throw that out there and thank you. But I do have a question. You, you mentioned the downtown development fund, but I didn't pick up on what the allocation was for this upcoming fiscal year.
I'll take that one, Ms. Byers. We did not make a new allocation for the downtown development fund this coming year. Two years ago, we had proposed some amounts from PSVS last year, we actually did it from the general fund, but just given the fiscal challenges, we didn't recommend another funding allocation into that fund this year. What historically was sort of the vision and intent was to create some incentive programs as we looked at that and how that triggers some of the other offsets like prevailing wage. We've reallocated those funds to infrastructure projects over the, over this last year, and so we would, we've proposed instead infrastructure projects in downtown as opposed to putting money into that fund.
Okay. I will advocate for us to keep that particular line item. We have to be very intentional about downtown revitalization. It just doesn't happen, right? We have to be focused, and we have to make it a priority. It in fact is a priority that the council has stated, and, you know, we have to back that up with budgets. And, and these dollars are absolutely, I believe, absolutely critical, and we, we need to think of new ways in which we can utilize these dollars so that we can, again, get us to that next increment of revitalization of downtown. For example, we have a number of large buildings in downtown Bakersfield that are old, they're aging, they have a number of deferred maintenance issues, and they're underutilized. They have second, third, fourth floors that are vacant, completely vacant. And so there really isn't a good economic or financial incentive unless there's an actual, you know, push from the local government for property owners to actually make a significant investment. And so that's one of the areas where I think this particular fund can really help us with that next iteration of downtown revitalization. Get those second, third, fourth floors occupied and allow for the property owner to convert them into either improved office spaces or perhaps housing. Many folks have talked about perhaps adding boutique hotels within those buildings, allowing for those property owners to be creative, but then also providing that financing, that gap financing, or whatever it is, incentive to help people make that, make that work. Similar to how we've helped these EOA, with, through these EOAs, these smaller businesses, they get some part for us to look at these larger structures. Because the alternative is scary and could be grim. These properties continue to decline, we've seen properties that are, have become vacant, fallen into disrepair, and they become liabilities, not just for the property owner, but especially for the city, to respond to all of the various different issues that occur when you have those property, properties that, that remain abandoned and vacant. And it becomes a problem for the surrounding businesses and community. So I would really encourage us to take a second look at that particular allocation, and I hope that we can find some creative ways in order to make that investment, to be really focused in on downtown and intentional about fulfilling our goal that we've established. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Just one question, and that's, could you break down for us a little more how we'll be spending the twenty-two million Transformative Climate Communities Grant, and, and also how soon that money will actually get spent so that, in the projects that it'll be going into, that we might see things start to happen?
I would love to be able to share that with you. Jason Kater, Economic and Community Development Manager, has, was the one that oversaw that grant application. It is a six-year timeframe, five-to-six-year timeframe to spend those funds. Some of the projects include the Bakersfield Senior Center adding housing units. There's been some floods at the Senior Center, so they'll be demolishing that, creating a new Senior Center that has housing units. It also includes some tree planting and some street improvements along MLK Boulevard. There's a variety of things, like there's tenant protection component to it to ensure that people remain in their housing. There is homebuyer assistance that is included in that. It just has a wide range of projects, and I kind of wish, he's probably going to start texting me because I'm sure he's watching this, like, you are messing up my project. But there's about nineteen projects that are included that, that will be sponsored through this, and we really leveraged other funds. I keep talking about this leveraging and, and working with our other departments. We do a great job, I think, working with our Wreckin' Parks Department for some of their programs, and so we also leverage Public Works, Safe Routes to the School. I do have a note of how much. Community revitalization, we used one point five million to leverage for our TCC projects, and then we had ninety thousand for MLK Streetscapes, and those kind of things go into this TCC grant and these improvements to the neighborhood. I think there's also bus route conversations so that they have better access, and just a wide range, and I would love to be able to share that with you more completely.
And does this, does, did any significant portion of this go to the MLK Park first phases, or I think we were doing thirty percent construction document or something, or that's different?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. The eligibility requirements only allowed for us to include initially tree plantings at the park is what was eligible. We've, we've made a few adjustments to that over time, but it just, and while I just have the mic, just to round out a couple of the other types of projects, there are projects that will help homeowners put, be able to put up energy efficiency projects, like weatherization as well as solar panels out in these disadvantaged neighborhoods. There's going to be dollars that go towards workforce development as required by the state, has to be included in this grant. There's going to be projects that actually go towards infrastructure, you know, and some of our matching in particular goes towards some of those infrastructure projects, as well as some of the other sort of neighborhood revitalization type of projects. So those are the majority of those projects. We also have funding into the Senior Center remodel and affordable housing added to it as part of this grant as well.
These were, these were federal funds?
These were actually state funds.
They're actually state, okay.
We did apply, using that, again, leverage. So the federal government did have an EPA grant, and we submitted an application for that as well. To kind of enhance some of these projects, we submitted an application for twenty million dollars. We'll hear if we were awarded that later this summer.
Okay. Thank you.
But the work was pre-done, so we're just going to build on it.
Thank you, Ms. Byers, and now the Police Department, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here and fill in on behalf of Chief Terry. I'd like to start our presentation of the proposed budget for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, and starting out with our mission statement, the Bakersfield Police Department partners with our community to protect the lives and property of the people we serve. We try to let that inform each of the things that we do, and we believe that that also properly informs what our proposed budget will be for the next year. We'd like to start off by talking through some statistics over 2023, and we picked some, some overall highlights that I'd like to be able to discuss with you. Overall, we saw a citywide crime reduction of twelve percent. We saw a thirteen percent decrease in property crime, coupled with a twenty-nine percent decrease in homicide, an eight percent decrease in robbery, and a ten percent decrease in auto theft. We did see an approximately one percent increase in rape and a twelve percent increase in aggravated assaults. A further look into the aggravated assault numbers reveals that we saw a pretty significant increase in domestic violence-related numbers. That's something that will continue to inform our work going forward, and we're looking at, at meeting with partners, including the Open Door Network, about what we can do to try to increase our level of effectiveness as it, as it results, or as it relates to, to domestic violence. Some of our performance that we'd like to be able to talk about, starting off, is our response times to 911 calls when they come in. The national standard and our goal is to answer ninety-five percent of our 911 calls within twenty seconds. We moved closer towards achieving those goals, but we still fell short of the desired ninety-five percent, and it's, it's continued area of focus for us as we move into this next year. I'd like to report out on what our response times were to Priority One, Priority Two, and Priority Three calls for service. Again, I'll, I'll remind the, the group and those listening that for us, Priority One calls for service are calls for service that are our highest priority, impacting life and death. It's a kind of a national standard, and our goal to be anywhere within the city's jurisdiction in under seven minutes. A very slight decrease of one second over this last year, so we'd like to continue to push for seeing further decreases. A Priority Two are in-progress crimes that could potentially lead to injury, and Priority Three are peace disturbances, crimes, and where the suspect has fled. So you can still see that while we brought some decreases, we still have some work to do as it relates to increasing our overall efficiency in our response times. As we move into this next year's budget, you'll see that there is a six-and-a-half percent increase in personnel services, just under seventeen percent increase operationally, and an approximately eighty-eight percent increase in capital outlay. in capital outlay. You can see some of the explanations on the left side of the screen there that our 6.5% increases are related to salaries and benefits. Our almost 17% increase deals with some of our rates as it relates to vehicle rates, technology rates, our risk and liability rates, as well as expenses associated with the animal shelter, bringing an overall 8.5% requested increase. There are two capital improvement projects that we're bringing, asking for consideration. One is elevator modernization. Our elevators, you know, are aging and built in 1975. Parts are becoming a little more difficult to find. You know, at various points throughout the past year, one or both have been out of service, and so being able to invest and modernize some of our elevators within our business, within our building will, is a need for our department. Secondarily, it's a real-time information center. It's our next capital improvement project request. This is something that we've been working towards for quite some time and really is a way to try to bring some synergy to some of our technological investments that we've utilized over the last several years. We think that it can help increase the information flow and aid in our dispatch, being able to gather additional information to send out to officers. We think that it will also help as we gather additional information in times of crisis citywide, that's not limited to crime, but if there are any major issues that pop up citywide, we think it will allow us to be able to share resources across the entirety of the city. Like to bring you a snapshot of where we are personnel-wise. Within our sworn staff, we have approximately 46 vacancies, leaving us approximately 91% staff. And amongst our professional staff, approximately 28 vacancies, leaving us at approximately 88% staff for, across the entirety of our department, being approximately 90% staffed. I'd like to take this opportunity to think and recognize the work from Human Resources, and I don't think any of, I don't think, none of this would be possible without their dedicated assistance in being able to help us with closing some of our significant hiring challenges that we've had. You can see that since July of 2019, when the council began investing even more into the hiring of police officers, that 272 police officer candidates have been hired. Unfortunately, we only have about 168% or 168 that have graduated, but we have been able to make some adjustments to increase the percentage of those completing the academies, and we've seen that increase from 65% to approximately 85%, and we're hoping that that's a number that will continue to stay. Our average class size is approximately 21, which is still lower than we'd like it to be. We are allowed to be, to have approximately 40 in each academy, so we're continuing to mine for applicants and recruit as much as we can, but we still have some room to go. We've had eight academies that have been completed, another one that will be graduating in July, and a new academy that will be starting in August, with another one scheduled to begin right after that, when they graduate in December, another one to start in January. So we're constantly recruiting and trying to close that gap. We are bringing you a request for seven new positions this year. The focus on these positions for the first one is a Public Affairs and Communications Manager. This is civilianizing the Public Information Officer that we have, which essentially pushes a police sergeant back to full-time field-related duties. We see this position to plan, develop, and implement comprehensive communication strategies, some of the branding and marketing strategies on behalf of the Police Department. Secondarily, we'd like to add the, a Fiscal and Administrative Specialist with the increases that we've had within the department. It's created an increased range of complex business tasks and state reimbursement-related audits, our internal procurement processes in our, in our asset management. We've been able to increase some of the complement within our business office, and we think that this will help us to increase our overall budgetary efficiencies as well. We're requesting the increase of a secretary as well. As we enter a very critical phase of the stipulated judgment for us, this is really where we're looking at the implementation phase of the training associated with our stipulated judgment and the ongoing training that occurs. Keeping track of over 150 training courses is what's anticipated being pushed through, or the almost 700 staff that work there to meet the requirements of the Department of Justice, as well as our accreditation associated with the police officers' standards and trainings. We think that being able to have this position is something that will also take work away from police officers that are currently doing some of this work, returning them to more forward-facing duties as well. We're requesting the position of a fleet mechanic. The city does not currently have a certified motorcycle mechanic on staff, and as we've increased the complement of motorcycles within the Police Department, we found that all of our service is currently being done by a local vendor. We transport them to Harley-Davidson, which is being accomplished at an increased cost. It creates additional in-service time-related issues, that it takes two police officers off the street to be able to take the motorcycle up to Harley-Davidson, two off the street to go and pick them up, to be able to bring them back. And we think that this is a position that will ultimately save money, save time, and make us more efficient. We're requesting the addition of a police service technician to be assigned to the Traffic Division. Having police service technician with the ability to handle police reports will be able to free up a police officer that's currently handling injury or non-injury accidents, being able to have that officer go back out again to forward-facing field-related duties and keep them with, still assigned to Traffic, to continue to focus on speed reduction and fatal collision reductions. A police program coordinator is an additional position that we're requesting. This is an additional position that a police officer, currently a police sergeant, is doing, that would return that police sergeant to field-related duties. This is a position that organizes plans and leads various youth programs and activities at the Police Activities League. It helps assist in the staffing, the care, and the maintenance of equipment and facilities. And this position, again, allows a sergeant to be able to go back to forward-facing duties. A crime analyst is the last position that we're requesting and is associated with the Real-Time Information Center. Being able to have somebody who monitors the points of intelligence that we have in a real-time setting, to be able to share that information, push it out to forward-facing field officers, will help us to utilize a variety of different databases, as well to proactively relay this viable information to our field people, which we believe will increase our, or decrease our response times, increase our effectiveness in working to reduce crime. Happy to do the very best that I can to answer any of your questions. I know that's a very broad and brief overview, but I'll do my best.
Thank you. I don't see any requests to speak, so thank you very much. Are you pushing your button? Vice Mayor.
Couple of questions for you. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. 13% decrease in property crime. When we go out and talk to constituents, some would say that it may not be a decrease in actual property crime, but a decrease in reporting.
Sure.
How would you respond to that?
Yeah, we can only measure what's reported to us. I, you know, I'm getting more, more comfortable. I don't know how to measure it, but understanding that not only do we have to increase safety, we have to increase the feeling of safety, and I would tell you that most people would probably tell you that they don't feel that there is a decrease. And I'm really working at, as we're getting better at looking at our data, being able to say, we're showing decreases, we're showing an increase in the amount of arrests that they're making, but if it's not being reported, you know, or maybe unable to measure it, I'm also having a hard time with separating what some of the feelings are with some of the reality. And there's a perception that tons of windows are being broken, and the data would tell you that that's, that's either, that's not accurate. There may be a significant number, but it's, it might not be to the extent of what the feeling is. So it's hard to separate some of the, maybe some of the media reports, some of the social media reports, some of the conversations that are happening, from what some of the overall reported reality may be. So again, I can't, can't measure what, what doesn't come in, but I do think that, that property crime has been a focus. While I do think protecting life and reducing violent crime has been our absolute priority over the past several years, as we're seeing some of those decreases over the last three years or so with our gun violence reduction strategy, and as our staffing is increasing, being able to assign more detectives, increase the number of officers in impact, having dedicated officers assigned to the downtown, old town, current area, I think we're making some real strides in our level of responsiveness, our ability to investigate and to apprehend those that are involved in property crime. So it could be a combination of a lot of different things.
Okay, I appreciate that response. Thank you. But it just speaks to the complexity of the, of the issue.
Yes, sir.
Regarding response times, in years past, we've seen a slide that sort of disaggregates the different response times based on zone. Is there an opportunity for the council to review that data as well?
Yes, I can absolutely bring it. We have it tracked. We're split, split by zone, by the priority of calls per zone as well, so that's additional information that we can get to you.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just thought it'd be a good time to repeat my question about the deal with the county and the jail. We have all these repeat offenders that are in jail for three hours, back out on the streets. Are we making progress there, or are we not?
Thanks, Councilmember Smith. Two answers to that question. First, you didn't ask, but it's a good opportunity to point out that we aren't recommending new funding towards that partnership in this budget because we have $2 million in the current fiscal year that we will recommend carrying forward to help fund that. So not a new allocation, but there is money there to do that. The second answer is that there's been a lot of conversation. The county continues to remain interested in partnering with the city, but the response continues to be that they have to, you know, get their hiring for their regular detention deputy spots in place. I have requested specifically that we work in the new fiscal year, as of July 1, on a MOU with the county, and they've communicated that they'll continue to hire up. They don't expect to have enough detention deputies hired until probably at least the six-month or the 12-month even mark of next fiscal to actually staff those dedicated beds. So that is the answer that I continue to get, is that, you know, we're several months out from having folks hired.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and next, Fire, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I'll get started with our mission statement. The mission of the Bakersfield Fire Department is to protect, engage, and inspire a safe community through all-hazard response and community risk reduction while delivering legendary customer service. We accomplish our mission through the outstanding efforts of the various divisions within the Fire Department: suppression, training, arson, fire prevention, dispatch, admin, and maintenance. One of the messages I routinely tell our members is there is nobody any more important than any other member in the Fire Department. We all contribute equally to achieving this mission. So I want to thank all the men and women of the Bakersfield Fire Department for what they do. To accomplish our mission, the Bakersfield Fire Department is proposing a budget of $66,769,389 for fiscal year 2024-25. This represents a 4.28% increase over fiscal year 23-24, mainly due to salary and benefits increases, as well as internal rates increases from technology services, fleet services, insurance charges, and capital improvement projects. Personnel services increased 4.89% due to increases in workers' compensation, insurance, salaries and benefits, overtime, and other related costs. And I'll remind the council that there's a 4%, a 5% COLA coming in July, which is basically attributed to that. Fire Department experienced internal rate increases to the operating budget, including increases in fleet services, technology services, and a liability and property insurance decrease. Excluding internal costs and nondiscretionary increases for utilities, the Fire Department was able to maintain a general fund operating budget growth rate of 0%. Capital outlay is essentially the fund designated for large equipment purchases and capital improvement projects, which I'll get into a little bit more specifically on the next slide. Examining the increase in the general fund and PSVS proposed budgets, the increases, again, are in large part attributed to personnel cost increases and increases in internal costs. Fire prevention and COOPA revenues are estimated to increase by approximately $200,000 should the current trends continue, and this will be accomplished by placing an emphasis on inspections, especially as we achieve our full complement of inspectors in the coming Budget changes, one of the things I want to highlight is the overall decrease of $374,000 to our operating budget, and this is mainly due to the liability and property insurance rate decrease that we're seeing for this fiscal year. Again, PSVS increase mainly due to salary increases and internal rate increases. From the capital outlay fund, we're going to be looking towards a couple of expensive capital improvement projects. One is for, on the right side of the screen there, one is for partial roof replacement at Fire Department Headquarters to prevent future water damage during inclement weather, and another is for air conditioning unit replacements at two of our fire stations, Fire Station 7 and Fire Station 14. The department is also proposing the expansion of our rescue program at Fire Station Number One, the department's now busiest fire station. Chief staff is constantly evaluating Fire Department operations and the level of service that we can provide during emergencies. With medical emergencies taking on over 50% of our responses annually, the BFD is proposing adding a rescue at Fire Station One, similar to the rescue at Fire Station Number Two and Fire Station Number Six, with one exception. The rescue at Fire Station Number One will be staffed with a BFD paramedic, which will increase the level of service that we can provide in the downtown and surrounding areas. Knowing that there is always limited funding, the BFD chose to be creative and looked for innovative ways to get additional capacity from existing resources. Essentially, the Fire Department will be implementing this paramedic rescue unit without adding any additional staffing to our existing complement. We will be accomplishing this by shifting human resources from the two light engines, one at Station Eight and one at Station One, onto this rescue. We look at our personnel changes. There will be no changes, as I highlighted. We have 231 members in our complement, and for the next fiscal year, we will also have 231 in our complement. Personnel changes, again, we'll be staffing that rescue at Fire Station Number One, utilizing the resources, human resources, from Station One and Station Eight, so that will not add to our complement, would basically be reclassifying those members. And we're also looking at another reclass, again, just changing the responsibilities from one admin analyst, I'm sorry, one admin and fiscal services specialist to an admin analyst. This position will assist in preparing budget documents, tracking budgetary spending, encoding accuracy to the various Fire Department accounts, and will implement, will be instrumental when we implement fire service fees, which were approved by the City Council just weeks ago. This position will also be invaluable during succession planning efforts. I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to highlight some of the great work that the men and women of the Bakersfield Fire Department did in 2023. If I can show you the annual report here in my hand, I think you all should have received that. It gave some really good highlights of the great work that the men and women of the department did in 2023. I also listed some there for your viewing pleasure, but I will also add that when you look But I will also add that when you look at the capacity to do some of the things that we've wanted to do, like this annual report, we actually used the department's intern or fellow from our fellowship program that the city supports to be able to accomplish this that we were not able to accomplish in years past. I will, with that, I will go ahead and close and say thank you to the City Manager's Office, to the City Council, and the Mayor for your continued support of the Fire Department. And I'd like to open for any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I did look at the annual report, and it's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. And in that annual report, I noticed, and I'd never thought about it before, after redistricting, there is not a city fire station in Ward 4. And I think that we probably need to work on that.
Councilmember, I'll take that one because I can say that the Fire Chief is very happy to hear that. We've been having conversations that there are, according to the Fire JPA between the city and the county, there is a data analysis that is supposed to occur at a certain point if there is a greater percentage of the coverage area of a particular responding station that there should be consideration, whether that is a city or a county station. We don't typically see areas unincorporated. So typically, that means cities come, or stations come into the city based off of that analysis. And so we're actually looking at three different topics that are, I would say, a high-level policy issue for fire that, as it relates to our interactions with the county, and that's one of them, is to look at opening up the JPA and looking at some of those stations that, by the numbers, probably should come into the city. Not a small conversation to have with the county, but we're teeing that up.
Great. I appreciate that. And I didn't see this year your number of structure fires. I think it was in your report, but the percentage that were vacant structures.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Smith. I don't have the percentage. I'm not sure if our battalion chief actually has that. I can definitely get that for you. We do track the percentage of vacant building fires. One of the great things I can note is the great partnership between the City Attorney's Office, City Manager's Office, Building Department, and the Fire Department with the blighted building project. When we look at removing some of those opportunities from people who want to do bad and light some of these buildings on fire, it's very important to us that this partnership exists, and we get a report every couple of weeks on what phases of, whether it's renovation or demolition, that is occurring to some of these buildings that are concerned to us. So we do not necessarily see a huge reduction at this time, but as the blighted building program gains momentum, I definitely see the opportunity to show really positive numbers in that regard.
Thank you. That's also my hope. I'd like to track that trend over the years.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we can show that we're making real progress there. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Chief. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Another one of these amazing that the personnel isn't going up. So my question is, is that because you don't need anymore? Or are you having trouble recruiting qualified personnel that meet your standards?
Not necessarily finding the people that meet our standards. Really, when you look at the opportunity to grow, we're kind of handcuffed by the locations of the county fire stations. So really, when you're looking at expanding, you're looking at future fire stations and the staffing that comes with it. So with the county really surrounding the city, fire stations doesn't necessarily give us that opportunity to grow until the areas that are outside of their jurisdiction start getting annexed and we start getting that city property out, like Councilmember Smith said, out in his area by Frontier High. So we would look for opportunities in the future to be able to expand there. But really, what we're trying to look for is improving what we have as far as programs right now. And when you look at the output from our two light engines, and you look at the output from our current rescues, I think one of our rescues ran last year about 47% more calls with one rescue than the two light engines did combined. The other rescue, I believe at Station 6, responded to, I want to say 60, 60-ish percent more than the two light engines combined. So when we're looking at what the opportunities there on providing a level of service, and in this case, a higher level of service being a paramedic unit, we're looking at restructuring some of the ways that we do business. So it's really looking at improving the level of service that we have right now, and we're able to accomplish that with this existing human resources.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief. And I don't see any other requests, so on to Water Resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council for the opportunity to present the Water Department 2024-2025 budget. And the audience to support the department today. With me is Assistant Water Resources Director Daniel Monado, Water Resources Manager Yvette Roldan, and Fiscal Administrative Services Specialist Robert Salagi, along with Superintendent Jason Sof, and Water Attorney, Deputy State Attorney 2 Matt Cullum. The Water Resources Department and the Wastewater Division have many similarities, including managing water supplies and operating and maintaining water facilities. The Water Resources Department manages and operates the city's Kern River water supply and system and ensures that the domestic water system that delivers safe and clean drinking water to residents and businesses is operated and maintained. The Wastewater Division receives the city's residential and commercial sewage, operates and maintains the city's wastewater facilities, and manages the city's secondary and tertiary water supplies. With the sensitivity associated with water supplies, the requirements to beneficially use water, and the implementation of Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, it is reasonable and practical to bring these two entities together under one management team. Through this budget process, effective July 1, 2024, the Water Resources Department and the Wastewater Division will become the Water Department. With this merger, efficiencies and cost savings will be achieved within the department in many areas, including fiscal administration, engineering, operations, and maintenance. Example of these departmental benefits include having a single fiscal administrative services officer over the department instead of having a FASO at Water Resources and a FASO at Wastewater; having a single engineering unit that can work together, share knowledge and expertise, and reduce contracted engineering expenses; utilizing operational staff and equipment at both facilities to support maintenance activities and reduce the need for contracted labor equipment and equipment. The creation of the Water Department will allow for growth, training, and advancement opportunities of staff between two divisions. The Water Department's new mission statement is shown on this slide, but in summary, the goal is to holistically manage the city's water portfolio. Within the Water Department, we will consider the beneficial uses of all water types when making short-term and long-term decisions based on needs and growth of the city of Bakersfield. The chart includes the combined expenses and revenue for water resources and wastewater, including actual costs from 2022-2023, adopted budget 2023-2024, and proposed budget for 2024-2025. The fourth column shows the changes between last year's adopted budget and this year's proposed budget. The operations budget has increased. However, 50% of that increase is offset with the reduction of capital improvement project budget, also referred to as a CIP budget. This is due to miscellaneous projects and associated costs like service line replacements and plant maintenance projects being allocated from CIP into operations to accurately reflect that these types of miscellaneous projects should be accounted for as annual maintenance projects. The remaining increase of the operations budget will be discussed further on the next slide. As far as the funding sources, there is an increase to revenue across the board except for water connection fees. These fees have been reduced by over 50% because the fee is based on a per-acre connection, which is being impacted by the increase of high-density development. More homes per acre results in less revenue. The city's Water Board has advised staff to prepare a water rate study in 2024-2025 to evaluate if the revenue collected for water connection fees can cover the cost To expand on the increase to the operations budget, the department expects a significant increase of $2.6 million in expenses associated with PG&E rate increase for electricity and gas, and increases in the cost of water, fuel, and chemicals. It should be noted that the services provided by both water resources and wastewater are directly correlated to the city's growth. Over the last few years, there has been a significant increase in residential and commercial development, and both sections have increased their operational capacity to meet the demands. This results in the increase of electricity, chemicals, et cetera, which is a multiplier to the rate increase and an overall greater expense than what has been seen in the past. On a positive note, the Water Department is expected savings as a result of uniting the engineering staff, which will provide for efficiencies and reduction of expenses associated with contracted services. As far as capital improvement projects, there are several Weir projects within the River and Ag Division, of which one has already obtained grant funding and two are being evaluated by FEMA for reimbursements due to damage caused during the 2023 floods. In addition, domestic water will perform well rehabilitation projects and wellhead treatment projects for PFOS and TCP. And finally, Wastewater Plant 2 and 3 have several replacement projects and rehabilitation projects to address issues associated with aging infrastructure and technology. As I just mentioned, due to aging infrastructure and the increased treatment demands at Plant 2 and Plant 3 due to urban growth, a wastewater maintenance, sorry, wastewater maintenance superintendent position, along with a senior wastewater plant mechanic position are needed. With current available staff, maintenance occurs as equipment breaks, but the goal of the department is to improve maintenance efficiencies by utilizing these additional staff to identify equipment problems and put together long-term maintenance plans and replace equipment past its useful life before it no longer is operational. The end goal is to transition from our current reactive maintenance practices to a proactive and predictive maintenance program. In addition to these two new positions, the department is requesting the reclassification of the Water Resources Secretary 2 to Administrative 1. With the increase in personnel programs and projects, the position is essential to maintain the effectiveness and the efficiency of the Director's Office. The Hydrographic Division is growing in staff and work duties and requires the reclassification of the supervisor to a manager position. This manager position is responsible to oversee the additional planning efforts for the city's water use and supplies due to changes and impacts of water operations with legal challenges and the implementation of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Finally, the last three reclasses are to reconcile the budget with the job class and duties of the currently filled positions. All costs for new and reclassed positions are funded by current rates and clearing accounts. By uniting Water Resources Department and Wastewater Division, the Water Department will have a complement of 88 staff. With this, the department will now operate in the most efficient and productive manner when holistically managing the city's water supplies. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. First, congratulations. I asked, you know, the city manager should have said, you know, here's our new utility manager. So I doubled your work. Easy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I've mentioned it before, and I'll mention it again. I just, I really think there's a big opportunity. You save a lot of money in both those departments with solar. Both of them are high-energy users, high-electricity users, and both of them have a lot of property and a lot of opportunity to install solar. So I would hope that you are able to produce that in the future. And one other comment, you've got down here water connection fee, and that's where you talked about more density, less. But I thought that was the water availability fee, and the water connection fee was actually the per-unit fee.
No, the water availability fee is the water connection fee.
So what is it when I pay for my meter hookup?
That's your, yeah, it's your service connection. Yeah, it's your meter charge.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
I'd also like to express my congratulations, and I think it's a great consolidation. I think working smarter and hopefully more efficiently and better communication is a great idea. So I really just had a question. Maybe I missed something. I had to step out at the beginning. The revenues and the costs aren't the same on the slide. If you look at the total, in any year, there's a, total expenditures are always different than total funding sources. And I thought those were always supposed to be the same.
Because we are enterprise fund, because we have multiple revenues sources. So we have our water and our sewer enterprise funds. So they tend to, they don't necessarily always match. So in this case, because we do have the additional costs associated with the increases to the utilities for PG&E electrical, we have an increase to our overall budget above which our revenue is bringing in.
In that case, you draw down.
Yes, we use our fund balance.
We probably ought to, somewhere next time when we summarize, so here's the reserve fund, and kind of, then you'd see the whole thing balancing. Because I guess it's the only department we have something like this. Because some years, we're adding to it, and some years, we're subtracting, and that way, we're balancing. Okay.
And in our fund balance, we actually have a requirement to reduce some of our fund balance within the different, within the domestic, there's a requirement to bring our fund balance down over time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Budek. And for our final presentation, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Greg Straklous, Public Works Director, for the record. I'm pleased today to present to you the fiscal year 24-25 budget. Several members of the Public Works team are in the audience. And our mission, of course, is to deliver efficient, responsive, and cost-effective public works services and infrastructure that protect, enhance the safety, health, and quality of life in Bakersfield. In preparing this year's budget, we started out with a spreadsheet that showed Wastewater Division moving out of Public Works, but we didn't adjust the previous years. So when you looked at this particular spreadsheet, you would see the overall department having a net reduction. So what we wanted to do is show you the numbers as a comparison with wastewater not being as part of the department in the prior year, so you'd have a better comparison of what that difference is. And that's this next particular spreadsheet. You'll see that the department's request is $168,695,861 for an operating budget for next fiscal year, which represents 3.36% increase. As we look at some of the highlighted areas of this particular budget, you'll see that the professional services represents a cost of living and step increases for those department employees across the 400-plus department employees. You'll also notice in the funding sources down below, increases and decreases. Specifically, the major decrease is with PSVS funding down 56%, which means that we're replacing that funding with some county revenue that we're receiving for a particular activity within solid waste. We'll break that down in more detail later on in the presentation. Move to the next. In preparing this year's budget... In preparing this year's budget, there are some significant issues that have, I wanted to point out in terms of budget impacts. Of course, one of the most notable is the transition of the Wastewater Division plant maintenance portion to the Water Resources Department. The Public Works Department will still maintain the collection and conveyance system for stormwater and sanitary sewer. Like all other departments, we're seeing rising utility charges, particularly for electricity, natural gas, rising material costs and labor costs, both in-house and outsourced, insurance rate adjustments. The solid waste division was able to increase its rates by a cost of consumer price index rate of about 2.5% this past year. They've also been able to add about 1,400 new accounts in solid waste, so solid waste is growing as the city grows. One really good news item is that we've been able to leverage about $93.5 million in state, federal, and grant allocations for our budget, particularly in the capital improvement Where we are, the operational cost items that are within the budget, the department's control, remain essentially flat with a couple of exceptions, and I'll detail some of those exceptions. Some of the most notable department highlights, the Thomas Roads Improvement Program has successfully opened the Centennial Corridor. We have eight complete street improvement projects in the works, and most of those projects are funded with state, federal allocations or grants. We have multiple neighborhood traffic calming and multimodal safety projects that have been implemented this year, but also are planned for next year, which is in line with City Council's goal for safety on the transportation side. And our repaving efforts continue with approximately 120 lane miles resurfaced this fiscal year, and we're hoping to see that again next fiscal year. In terms of the personnel overview, with wastewater moving to the Water Resources Division, that represents 50 employees. And on the bar on the right-hand side, that is the light-shaded green bar on the top, which are now within Water Resources. So the Public Works Department full-time employee count is 444. Going into this next fiscal year, the department is requesting some changes in terms of personnel. Number one, to reclassify a vacant admin analyst position to an assistant operations manager in fleet. Within fleet, we're seeing very difficult state mandates that are being imposed in terms of converting our fleet to a zero-emission fleet. There are significant challenges to doing that, and that's one of the main challenges. The other challenge is the incredible competition amongst the automotive industry for acquiring vehicles. We've had to become very innovative in how we lock in the acquisition of new vehicles. It's very, very difficult to do that. We're looking at this position to help us become more innovative in that industry competition, but also to help us get up at the forefront in terms of the zero-emission vehicle goal or mandate. Second, we're doing a series of reclassifications, converting a civil engineer four position that became vacant and splitting that into two positions within the advanced project delivery team. Reclassification of a clerk typist to an admin and fiscal services specialist. Reclass an engineer technician to an engineer one-two. Reclassifying secretary two. These reclassifications are really indicative of staff's incredible skills and abilities to actually come to the table and offer to do more, seeing a situation, and supervision asking to do more. Two additional new positions in solid waste in terms of customer service. We receive thousands and thousands of phone calls each year, ranging from billing issues to bulky item pickup, stolen carts, and of course, 1383 organics mandatory issues in terms of how we dispose of our waste. So this request for two additional customer service reps is really an effort to increase our level of service and response time. Now, we have tried other things, like outsourcing to an answering service. And for the first year, it worked okay. The second year, when they were up for renewal, the price tripled because they actually found out the level of effort it took to actually take care of the customers and respond to these phone calls. Moving on to the capital improvement program summary. So looking at this year's capital improvement program, we've achieved an 84% implementation rate. Of the 81 projects listed in this year's CIP, which total $68 million in value, we've been able to encumber funds for 84% of that. And that's only as of May 1st. We have 60 more days to get to 100%. Some of those projects, they cross the board in terms of facilities repair, road resurfacing efforts. And what I'd like to do if I could, Julie, if you could help me out with this on the video, we've integrated a video into this presentation. If a picture's worth a thousand words, we're hoping a short video is worth a little bit more.
Public Works team is pleased to present this video of some of the most significant projects and services delivered. The team delivering these projects and services include--
Dedicated, hardworking men and women in the industry.
I'm Paul Archer with the Advanced Project Delivery Division. Our team works on complete streets, traffic calming, bridges, and facility improvement projects, just to name a few.
My name is Gavin Grimes. I'm a civil engineer with the Advanced Project Delivery Division, and our division provides designs for traffic calming and complete street style improvements, such as this speed table here at Morello Way. It's intended to slow traffic down and make safer crossings for students.
My name's Fernando Montes. I'm a civil engineer three with Design Engineering. Our division's responsible for putting out projects with plans and specifications for basically anything in the public right-of-way. That can include pavement rehabs, parks, pedestrian improvements, traffic signals, sewer and storm drain improvements, just among other things.
Hello, I am Dan Sessone, park and landscape designer for the city, here with some recent plans that our division has produced. This is our Bakersfield Sports Village, a representation of the concept plan, and probably less than a third of the working drawings have been produced for the park. What our division does on this park is, has assisted in selecting the consultants, as well as done the project management and the construction overseeing, along with our construction services division.
I'm Ryan Starbuck with the Traffic Engineering Division. Traffic engineers constantly monitor traffic conditions, looking for ways to improve safety. Some of these ways include adding traffic signals, changing the timing of existing signals, and improving roadway signs and markings. This also includes adding bike lanes, crosswalks, and traffic calming techniques to make the roads safe for everyone.
My name is Inez Valentino. I'm the construction supervisor for the city of Bakersfield. I'm in charge of construction, inspection, and survey division. In construction, we do everything from development to capital improvements. We do projects such as Miss Moran, any emergency project. We also do lighting projects, and we do full-debt reconstructions of new roadways and existing roadways. With survey, we take care of every monumentation here at the city of Bakersfield, and also any elevations.
My name is Trish. I'm with Public Works subdivision. I'm an engineering technician, and what we do in subdivision is issue permits to any work being done in the city right-of-way. Street permits, encroachment permits, transportation permits. We process all improvement plans, street plans, sewer plans, grading, again, anything that's done in the right-of-way. We do easements here. We process maintenance districts.
My name's Sean Kacall. I'm the general services superintendent. My division is responsible for traffic signals, streetlight maintenance, electrical maintenance for any city facility, parks, buildings, HVAC, and custodial building maintenance and graffiti removal.
My name's Brian Paddock. I work with the general services. I'm the supervisor for the 32E Race, the graffiti eradication program. We probably take up about 60% to 70% of what comes in on the Bakersfield mobile app is graffiti, so we do stay pretty busy out here. We do have outstanding, probably easily over 100 tickets right now.
So that was a glimpse of this fiscal year. And if we take a look at next fiscal year, I'd like to start out with the capital improvement For next year's capital improvement program, it has increased primarily due to state and federal allocations to $147.5 million for projects. Let me see. Here we go. Most of those projects falling in the reliable infrastructure city council goal. Again, $93.5 million state and federal allocations with grants. $41.9 million is related to the TRIP project at 5899, the seventh and the eighth movements, but that doesn't minimize the $30-plus million for complete streets and multimodal facilities. In terms of some of the projects that we're looking at, of course, the master plan for the animal care shelter has this continuing work with a $500,000 request to move facility improvements there forward. Baker Complete Street, Kentucky Urban Greeting are two projects that will be matched with grant funding sources. And electric vehicle infrastructure, one of those major challenges we've got to gear up for in terms of planning and retrofitting our fueling stations to incorporate electric vehicle infrastructure. In PSVS funding, streetlight improvements, our continued effort to brighten corridors for public safety at $250,000. We have 18th and 19th Street Complete Project. We have significant funding already available and allocated towards that project, but this is to get us over through the bidding process and for a complete funded project. Citywide traffic calming allocations continue, and then SB1, which is gas tax funding, South H Street and University Avenue are two of those streets that are using those funding source. Looking specifically at engineering as a whole, we have multiple engineering divisions, but what we've done is consolidated all of them because essentially their functions are consistent across the board in terms of engineering. On the left side, you see all the accomplishments that were already reviewed, but on the right side, you see increases, modest increases. Personnel services, most of that is related to cost of living increases and step increases, but we're also allocating a little bit more in terms of temporary pay. With $145 million capital improvement program, it's going to be very, very important to have a well-balanced team that includes in-house staff, temporary services, temporary staff, and also outsourced services. In terms of operations, we have a decrease in liability insurance of about $684,000 for these funds. In subdivisions, the most notable item here is to recognize that we will be charged with reviewing applications for high-speed rail design plans as they come through the door. And high-speed rail has an agreement or is about to enter into an agreement with the city to reimburse us for those review services, and we're estimating a cost of about $300,000 to provide that additional service through the subdivision section. General services, same trending in terms of labor. We are asking for a little bit more funding in terms of overtime to provide that level of service, to be responsive for vehicle crashes that occur, signal timing issues. Another notable item in the operations budget is the increased cost in electricity that powers our streetlights at $665,000. I'm going to skip over that part. Streets and utilities maintenance. On this one, same with the labor services, about 9% increase somewhat related to cost of living and Medicare, CalPERS. We are requesting a little bit of an increase in overtime and temporary help to help facilitate the additional effort and work related to our operations. And in terms of risk and fleet rates, those in the operations side are increasing about Wanted to break down a little bit in terms of the resurfacing effort of our streets. You'll see a pie chart on the left, and the primarily, the funding components for resurfacing, you see at least 50%. The green and the orange are through gas taxes, either the SB1 tax or the general gas tax. You do see the blue in the upper right-hand of about $11 million, which is federal reimbursement through transportation laws such as IST and others that we use to resurface our national highway system roads and our state highway system roads. You see a utility surcharge of $3 million. $2 million is in ARPA allocation, so we would be resurfacing within those, the designated ARPA zone, and then $750,000, which is the, let me see, capital outlay fund, sorry. I did want to point out, our complete street projects do include a resurfacing effort. They include a lot more, stormwater, streetlights, sidewalks, but they do include resurfacing as well. So with the $49 million that are allocated for complete street projects, resurfacing will come from those projects as well. Solid waste. Couple of things in solid waste. I mentioned the Consumer Price Index increase of about 2.7%, I believe. Solid waste landfill disposal fees have increased 5%, so this is reflective of that increase. This is also reflective of additional revenue from the county for the illegal dumping, which is helping to offset our Clean Cities initiative, as well as the pop-up-drop-off events. And just to round out the department with fleet, most notable here is the 10% or 11% reduction in capital outlay, which means that we're just purchasing less vehicles. We do have a backlog of vehicles that we do need to purchase. Again, the market is extremely competitive in doing that. We have that funding allocated already. Going into next fiscal year, though, the request is less than the previous year in terms of the allocation of those vehicles. That completes my presentation, and we are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Strakelus. Councilmember Gray.
I don't know how you read my mind on that one. I hadn't hit the button yet, but I was gonna, was going to. Thank you, Mr. Strakelus. I appreciate that. I just have one question. Out of that 49.5 million that you're planning for, allocated for resurfacing and traffic calming and all that, how much of that 49.5 is actually resurfacing?
That's a tough question to answer. Most of these projects are at various stages of design. When we design those corridors, the entire project limits will be resurfaced from curb to curb, and it varies. It's hard to come up with a number right now, but we could crunch the numbers and come up with something as far as fraction of that.
Well, I would be curious of that, of how much is resurfacing and how much is actually going towards traffic calming. I'm seeing a lot of green paint around the city right now, and then I see this situation over on Oak Street today. I think that is more important, having that median, so I'd like to know what percentage of that is, if there's any way to give me that number.
We can crunch the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First, congratulations on, you know, getting rid of wastewater, I guess. Getting smaller department, but not by much, huh? It was interesting, you talked about 1,400 new solid waste customers, and I guess that's my, close to my single-family number that I had asked for. And I did read something the other day where Bakersfield is the fastest-growing city over 250,000 in the nation. So we do continue to grow, and your department continues to serve more of constituents. So thank you. So thank you. New customer service for solid waste, awesome. That's always been a big, big problem, and just recently, you know, somebody called me and had spent hours trying to go through the digital, you know, couldn't find a real person, you know, and I've heard that story a lot of times. So thank you very much for that. The complete streets, very excited about it. Don't have the numbers yet, but I mean, last year it looked like we did reduce fatalities, and I don't know if we're on track to do that this year, but we will continue to try. That's all I have. Thank you.
It's Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Strakelous, thank you very much, and thank you to your team. Congratulations for all the great work that you've done throughout the year, opening Centennial Corridor, all of these wonderful projects that have occurred in the city. On behalf of my constituents, I want to thank you for a lot of the work related to street lighting improvements throughout Ward 2, in particular in Westchester with the enhanced lighting on Cedar and A Street. I know we had a hiccup with Cedar, but we got it done, and I'm looking forward to expanding that work in additional streets in Westchester over the next fiscal year. I also want to thank you for all the work related to streets repaving, resurfacing, and alley repavement. This has been one of the elements that I've been most proud of as I engage my constituents, particularly in East Bakersfield and Southeast Bakersfield, where many folks really rely on those alleys to get to their front door, frankly. And these alley repavements have made a world of difference for so many families in our community. And it's sad to see that and to say that for decades, they went unrepaired, but now we're making good on that, and we still have some to do. I'm hoping that we can get at it this upcoming year, but we're making great strides, and your Streets Division team is excellent. And so I want to commend them for all of their hard work, day in and day out. I represent an area that's, as I mentioned, and I say it a lot, it's over 100 years old, the historic neighborhoods. And so with that, we have naturally, you know, decaying infrastructure, and it requires an investment that's intentional and focused in order for us to preserve the quality of life within those neighborhoods. And so I want to thank you for that and focus. In years past, we have focused in and identified specific line item for Ward 1 and Ward 2, given the fact that there are infrastructure needs that go above and beyond some of the other parts of town, given just the age of the area. Just want to ensure that we have that line item. I didn't see it reflected in the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. The same funding is there. We've actually just slightly changed the label to be disadvantaged neighborhoods. But it is the same intent. And there's actually, by the way, there's funding for alleyway improvements in disadvantaged neighborhoods as well as just street resurfacing priorities in disadvantaged neighborhoods.
Great, fantastic.
Both of those are in the budget.
Great, thank you so much. And in fact, I got a text message at 6:00 AM this morning asking for sidewalk improvements in Westchester, and I know that we had a conversation a few weeks ago about sidewalks being the responsibility of the adjacent property owner per state code, and I recognize that. But I do think that it is important for us, particularly in the downtown core, for us to have a program that enhances the sidewalks because we want to improve walkability for the core of our city. And so I'd like to make that referral as we look towards the next budget. And then Councilmember Smith eloquently articulated the point related to safe streets and complete streets. I was just at a conference, actually, with Strong Towns, and there I had an opportunity to meet the director of, I'm missing her upper title, but she was the Transportation Director on New Jersey City and, or Jersey City, where they've been able to effectively reduce the number of fatalities by pedestrians to zero, whereas in the 10 years prior to that, they had over 90 pedestrian fatalities. And we can do the same thing here, and we can do the same thing by design, by designing our roadways so that they're safer and so that they're safer for all users, for motorists or pedestrians, for those who are walking, for those who are bicycling. I have many constituents who rely on their own two feet or a bicycle or public transportation to get to and from work and school and to the market, and we need to make those roadways far safer. So it's not just green paint on the street. It's actually a safer condition for so many people to actively live out their lives in their own community. So I want to commend you for all the efforts that you're making to make our neighborhoods safer through traffic calming, and I hope that we can double down on those efforts in the future.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Greg, just one question. Last year, you sent me, it was really a matrix of the road improvements scheduled in my Ward, Ward 5, a bunch of line items, so I can tell what was scheduled. Could you send me the Ward 5 schedule so I could look it over that's anticipated in this budget?
Yes, sir.
And just my observation is, because we have a lot of very busy arterials from Stockdale Highway, Ming Avenue, White Lane, Panama, and Buena Vista and Gosford, which have to be, you know, some of the most traveled. And I'm noticing that the intersections seem to be in the worst shape. Sometimes we pave miles and miles, and I know it's spotty. It goes one mile good, one mile bad, but the intersections may be because of the amount of wear and tear they get. We're going to need to pay a special attention because it may be that the lanes look pretty good until you get to the intersection, and then it's just starting to waffle and crumble. And I'm kind of hoping you, at those especially really busy streets, that you guys have zeroed in on those, even if that's the only thing that's improved, you know, or that even needs it. But those are important because I can see they're starting to crumble in a lot of places again.
Yes, and we have highlighted some of those areas where the intersections either don't line up very well, or they've been subject to rutting and shoving, and the asphalt just has changed from its original.
Yeah, yeah. But those seem to be of particular concern, even though the street leading into the intersection may be okay, but those are really busy intersections. So anyway, if you send me the metric, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just failed to congratulate you on the completion of the Centennial Corridor and TRIP, and I know, you know, taking that over the line was difficult and do appreciate that, and also the continuing efforts on the 7th and 8th movements and making those happen as soon as possible. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
And ditto to that. I think, I don't know what's wrong with my voice today. I apologize. But I would be interested in the same matrix also for Ward 6, if you could send that to me. Be very interested. But again, we appreciate you. You came in at a really busy time for the city, Mr. Strakelous, and you pulled it off. So thank you so much. You've done a great job for us.
Got a great team.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Strakelous. Mr. Clug, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, Mayor and Council, just a few. And congratulations to you all on the dais for surviving this lengthy workshop. But just a few summary slides, and as we tee up those summary slides, I would just reflect that I'm not necessarily teeing this information up for deep conversation right now because there's a lot of content here. It's mostly so that you have in your hands a more summarized version of key information that you can use to deliberate and consider as we approach budget adoption in June. So I think it will be helpful for you just to have those key pieces of information to think about, you know, the tough decisions that you'll have to make as a council. Also, just again, for the public record, these are similar budget themes as you heard in February, and you heard in March, and you heard in April, no major changes to that. We also shared these same themes with the Oversight Committee, but this budget focuses on our essential services, especially with constricting resources. What I mean by constricting is that, you know, revenues are slightly up, not much, but of course, our costs are escalating much faster than our revenues are in the last two, well, the current fiscal, and we anticipate a next fiscal with fairly stagnant revenues. And so that just means the budget gets a little bit leaner, even though we're not facing shortfalls, as Mayor Go pointed out, we're not facing major deficits, but it just means things are a little bit leaner. We haven't made enhancements on the general fund side of things. How are we balancing our budget? Last year, we made an $8 million allocation to, you know, the general fund from PSVS Resources. We're anticipating about $9 million this year. I think the good news is, is that's, again, a less of an increase than, you know, some of our other increased line items, which means there is some growth in the general fund, but again, not enough to address all the needs and issues there. And so that is one way that we're balancing the budget. I would reflect, we're making strategic additions in the public safety and health services tax, and I'll go over those again in a moment that are the same reflections as you saw in a memo in April when we sent that information to the city council and to the Oversight Committee. We also need to finalize the spend down of ARPA in this coming fiscal year, and we are recommending some ARPA reallocations to offset some of our inability to pursue as many projects as we'd like on the PSVS side of things, and I'll explain a little bit more about that in a minute. And continuing to really go after those grants. You saw the grant on the federal side, significant federal grants right now. The feds were a little slower in getting their money downstream than the state was, and so we're still seeing large allocations available from the federal government. But also, the key theme is setting aside contingencies and being conservative in our budget approach. On the projection side, again, this is the same information you saw before, but we continue to use our long-range financial forecasting tool. We have seen, again, some modest increases in sales tax and property tax, and there are no new decisions to be made on our utility rate increases because those five-year plans have been adopted in prior years, but we'll see some of those same increases that were previously approved by council, but continue to have very low utility costs comparably in the state and region. And again, setting aside lots of contingencies against economic downturn. This is, again, no surprise, mostly here for the public record, that our cost drivers are all the items you heard department directors talk about today. So this is where I begin a summarization of the key discretionary items I would say for the council. On the PSVS side, this lists all of the personnel recommendations in one slide. We limited our growth to public safety and resilience. This is about the police, as well as on the community vitality side, we're recommending adding two call takers to help respond to the requests for addressing encampments. And you'll see that the new ongoing obligation is less than $1 million there. I did want to reflect the other personnel requests in one summarization, and I apologize, I actually missed the solid waste additions here in this slide. But overall, you're only seeing in entire positions, there's one for ERP, one position for ERP, one position for development services, one large reclassification in public works, and then the couple of additions for wastewater and for solid waste. So even though you saw probably lots of positions throughout the presentation, full or large additions of positions, there are very few, and this is across all other funds. And there are actually none that are allocated directly to the general fund, although the fleet, the Polaworks Assistant Operations Manager does have a notable impact to the general fund, as does the development services planner. But we held our personnel changes to a very minimal number of positions. The last bullet point there, I would just reflect really quickly, is you heard about a number of reclassifications, and the majority of those reclassifications range anywhere from maybe $5,000 up to about $15,000, $17,000, and $20,000. Small adjustments that are getting more from the capacity of our team at very incremental costs. We're trying to get more creative and more thoughtful, and how do we maximize the team that we have instead of just adding a bunch of positions? It's a little bit tighter. How do we get the most from the positions that we do have? And we've taken some position, one position, and split it into two, and we took two positions and combined them into one. And so we're just trying to get smart about how we're organizing and, again, maximizing city staff. And that's the bigger theme, I think, in this budget than the other additions because we limited it significantly. Going back to operating on the PSVS side, we are recommending $2.4 million in new operating costs. Again, these aren't locked in the same way as personnel costs might be, but they are ongoing operating costs. I would note, the same time, and this was in the memorandum related to PSVS, we also reduced more than $3 million in ongoing funding out of economic and community development. Ms. Byers referenced that earlier today in her presentation, but I just want to highlight that. We identified $3.2 million in ongoing costs that we could reduce from certain programs that we thought could handle it without completely eradicating those programs to make space for high-priority items like our challenges around homelessness. And so all of this is related to public safety or homelessness resilience, and the top number is about addressing those individuals that are the most chronic, chronically homeless that are in urban encampments that are causing a lot of the drain on city staff time, and also the biggest impacts to our residents' quality of life. And so this intensive case management team in support to the community vitality group is to address that small number of the most service-resistant individuals and get them into a different outcome. The second item, of course, is for our emergency shelter capacity. That's about expansion of Brundage Lane Navigation Center, and we're exploring also safe camps and options like, you know, pallet homes. And so we'll come back in July to council with recommendations for how to spend that $1.5 million, but we have two or three projects that we're in evaluation on right now to make recommendations for how to allocate those dollars. And then lastly, this is the support to that real-time information center. There's a capital component, but then some of that software maintenance is an operating cost over time. So that's the limit of operating on the PSVS side, and we offset that by similar reductions in other operating costs. Now shifting gears to one-time funds. What you saw also in April, though, was a list of about $21 million in potential projects on the PSVS side. As we're finalizing PSVS budgets, and I think in some reflection, some of the large PSVS allocations in prior years have been because we also had fund balance that we were able to allocate towards PSVS, and we are allocating some fund balance to PSVS in this coming year, but we're really recommending only spending about $11 million in one-time projects in PSVS. And to go from a list of $21 million in potential projects to 11 is a hard process, and so I'll walk through a little bit of staff recommendations around that. And as much as it's hard for us to recommend, it's even harder for council to make those decisions. And so in PSVS one-time funds, we are recommending, again, the creation of this real-time police information center, funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's a reduction from prior years. We'd been spending $5 million a year. This is a $3 million allocation. For MLK Community Center, we still have funding needs there, and we want to be able to leverage grant opportunities, and so this is creating funding for Grant Match there. And then many of the pictures that you saw today were made possible by this Perry account. It gives parks the ability to go in and make those quick improvements, the small and medium-sized improvements, and I am recommending we keep that in place because it's really where we get a lot of the work done that's responsive to community interest. Related to infrastructure, you'll see here, these are actually lower numbers than what were presented at the April memo in many of these categories for public works. Don't panic yet because we think we've identified how to get more of these types of projects done through ARPA funding. types of projects done through ARPA funding is one of our recommendations. But we want to continue to do street lighting, the highway corridor, hardscaping, landscaping. There are some complete streets, multimodal traffic calming, as well as median improvements. And lastly, street resurfacing. We want to continue to do as much street resurfacing as we can, but that is a total of about $11 million in PSVS one-time projects. So, how can we get more done with ARPA dollars potentially? So, there was a listing of the Open Door Network Shelter in PSVS. We're recommending that that is an eligible cost item that could be funded through ARPA dollars readily and quickly. Also, Jastro Park is one of the few neighborhood park improvements that we recommended to the Oversight Committee. It has now been underfunded for two years in a row on the CIP, and we do think that that is a high priority to get done. But it is in a qualified census tract, and we think it can move forward with that ARPA funding. And then, lastly, we noted that many of the areas where we're doing resurfacing and putting in street lighting are in the qualified census tracts, which are eligible for that ARPA funding. So, we can get a lot of that work done through these one-time monies, at least in this coming budget cycle, to offset the funding in PSVS. Where would we take some of that ARPA funding from? We've identified a couple of areas within ARPA that we are not anticipating spending all of those revenues, and particularly the workforce development. And also, we felt like Safe Routes, as we're trying to address some of the streets issues. The Safe Routes is in a similar theme, and we've identified many projects to do with the $5 million that's been there for Safe Routes. But we think we can reallocate some of those dollars towards our street resurfacing in those same neighborhoods. And then, ultimately, we had identified resources in the disadvantaged neighborhood revitalization fund that could be used for, for example, Open Door Network and some of the other projects that were on the prior slide. Again, big decisions for council to deliberate on. We don't have to have that, you know, conversation today. And I think as a full council, those will be big decisions. But that is staff's recommendation for how to offset some of those projects that we just don't have enough in one-time PSVS monies to go towards. I failed to mention also earlier, of course, we're including contingency offsets and reserve offsets for the PSVS budget that weren't listed in that table earlier, is that we, you know, will be setting aside. I think it's more than $2 million for further PSVS monies to go into reserves in next year's budget as well. Lastly, I've highlighted here three slides that entail the details of our Capital Outlay Fund. These are general resources that we put into capital projects. And I would argue that many of the items on these slides are fairly routine items that we don't want to take away, like our regular maintenance funds, or our regular, you know, sidewalk repair funds. But there are some projects on here where I think it's fair for council to be aware that, you know, we have the ability to decide whether some of these projects are a higher priority than those ones we just saw on the PSVS slides a few moments ago. And so, we've been pursuing renovations of, and the City Hall South Annex, that's the Public Works building that's behind this building. We've been working through a series of renovations in that building, and this is a continuation of, this is, I think, the second or third year of a multi-year project over there. We also have monies for miscellaneous roadway improvements. That gives us some flexibility to go and take care of that project that doesn't quite fit some of the other boxes. As noted earlier, we're behind on our infrastructure to be able to charge electric vehicles, as we're being required by the state to purchase those. We need to put some resource towards that, figure it out. We're continuing to invest in the animal shelter, about half a million dollars a year, to address those long-needed capital improvements there. And it was noted in the Police Department's presentation earlier today, this elevator modernization, that's a big replacement there. A couple of other streets projects that are related to that Grant Match funding that was referenced earlier. We have, and again, these are the types of projects that you should see in a typical CIP. If you're not fixing your roofs, then you're going to get, you know, more water inside buildings, and you're going to have bigger repairs down the road. And so, as we go through the rest of this list, I put the big ones first. But these are the typical types of things in coming slides you should see in your CIP enhancements to sidewalks, crosswalks, streetlights, et cetera. But I do want to point out a few that are unique. We have our neighborhood monument renovations. That's been a referral from Councilmember Freeman about continuing to get at our gateways and entryways and monuments. And this is a second phase of continuing to make those renovations and repairs. As noted earlier, the Fire Department is finding a way within existing staffing to get another rescue squad, but there's a need for just a vehicle there. And then, on this last slide, we're trying to get at the walls that are throughout the city. Those are actually city responsibilities. They're probably millions of dollars of liabilities, but we're trying to put aside some money each year to help us to get at the maintenance of those walls. And at some point in time, we'll probably have to escalate that based on the age of that infrastructure. But for now, it's a start. A couple of priority projects to have at least some funding in is getting at exercise equipment in parks, canal fencing, screening, and also trying to better secure some of our alleyways, continuing to have some one-time monies for spay and neuter. And all told, our Capital Outlay Fund is about $8.1 million. Again, based on prior years, I would have wished to put some more money into some of those categories and buckets. But we've made reductions to balance the budget, and that is kind of where we're at. And so, within those resources that you just saw between Capital Outlay Fund, PSVS, and ARPA, those are our staff's best recommendations about how to balance and make those tough calls. But I think between now and June 12th, when council will see the budget for the first review, and then ultimately, the adoption in June, this arms you with the information to have good dialogue about how to make those priorities and allocate those funds. Lastly, just want to also thank all of the departments, but also our budget team, for digging deep and putting together the budget this year. Our schedule was a little bit constricted, because we were working in a new system. We had to figure out some new things in the new system, as well as not all the information was ready as early as we would have liked to have had it because of the new system. But we've put together now a balanced budget. Of course, at any point in time, there's probably some small fixes to any budget as you ramp up to budget adoption. But because of the timing with our ERP, I do expect there may be a little bit more refinements than in a typical year. But our commitment to council is to be very clear. If, for example, we identify that there's, I don't know, a few extra $100,000 in, let's say, a PSVS for one time, we'll definitely be very clear and transparent about that to council as we continue to reconcile our old system and our new system, and make sure everything's tight in there. If there's any material changes, we'll make those really highlighted to council that are any different than what we've presented to you today. But overall, we've prepared our balanced budget for the council, and we're ready to present that to you in June.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Clegg, can we receive a document that outlines all those reoccurring items that were funded in previous years that are being reduced?
Yes.
This year?
Absolutely.
So that we can make those decisions with a clear eye. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your participation and your hard work. And with that, we stand adjourned at 4:14.